People at home, I'd like to welcome you to the El Dorado City Commission Meeting. And at this time, I will call to order the February sixteenth, two thousand fifteen meeting. First of all, it's our honor to have Pastor Stan Seymour and the First Christian Church to come forward and lead us in invocation.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Father, as we come to you in Jesus' name, we thank you for your goodness, for your grace and your mercy, for your word that guides us, for the promises that we can claim. Father, we thank you for the statement that you tell us in James that we can come to you and ask for wisdom and you'll give it to us and guide us. I pray, Father, for that gift to be present with these commissioners and the staff here tonight. And not, Father, just for our government here in El Dorado, but throughout Kansas, the United States, and around the world. We'll give you thanks for this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a junior school Girl Scout troop here that's gonna help us with that. So, Tab, if you can, girls come on up here. Come back against this right here, there you go. And she's gonna start, she's gonna tell what troop it is.
This is troop four oh one four six, and I'm Kaylee Morris.
What do you like about El Dorado, Kayla?
And I like about El Dorado is all the nice people in it.
Good one.
Hello, my name is Aleah DeBida, and what I like about Kansas, El Dorado, Kansas, is there's so much nice people and there's Girl Scouts here.
My name is Keely Hamilton, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is, is all the fun parks.
Okay, thank you, ladies, you wanna turn around? Turn this way.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, girls.
Thanks.
Okay, we have no proclamations tonight, and we have no personal appearances that shows up. So, the first agenda item is public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and state their name and address and have anything that they would like to say about El Dorado? Any questions or anything? Okay, if not, we will close the public comments section, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Item number two. Gentlemen, you got anything in that area?
I don't.
I didn't.
No, I don't.
I had a couple little ones. On page two, there's some checks for two hundred dollars made out to attorneys. Tab, do you know what that's for? Is that for people in court or something that we have to pay for?
Mr. Mayor, it's probably a court-appointed counsel fee. I wouldn't know that for certain, but that's the typical fee per case.
Okay, that makes sense. That thing kinda caught my eye. Under the stormwater fund, looks like we bought a hot water tank and a vacuum. And I just, that kinda hit me why that would be under the stormwater fund. One's seven hundred and twenty dollars and the other one's three thirty-one, that's on page nine, Tab.
I'll have to get back to you on that, I don't know.
So, I'm not, just thought somebody might wanna check into that. On page eleven, tourism tax, it looks like we bought a credenza with tourism tax. That just kinda caught my eye too, for five hundred dollars.
That one is for the marketing manager's desk. So, she needed a lockable piece for her desk so that we could keep some things in there that were, couldn't be left out.
All right. See, we bought a backhoe for thirty-six thousand. We followed our procurement policy on that for her.
Yes, we did.
Okay. I noticed that there was three lease payments that showed up on this deal, to Commerce Bank for six thousand. And it kinda looked like it was all the same, it was on page fifteen. I thought it was kinda unusual making three six-thousand-dollar lease payments on the same thing in one month.
It's one lease payment for eighteen thousand, separated out in three different funds.
That makes sense. Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, agenda item number three is a resolution for the issuance of an IRB for the proposed Days Inn. Who would like to start that discussion? Does the city wanna give us a little background to that?
Sure. The state of Kansas and most states allow entities to issue industrial revenue bonds for a wide variety of topics.
As a, what occurs is someone wants to borrow money. For business reasons, they'll want to do a bond. In this case, that's what happened. The city of El Dorado really doesn't do anything about it except for commissions approve it. When they issue an IRB, the actual owner of the facility will be the city of El Dorado until such time as the bond is paid off. The city of El Dorado is at no risk. Borrowers come to the city with the bank, so it's all done independent of the city. And your only role is to approve the IRB and its use.
Part of the IRB is a ten-year tax abatement though, right?
It's for whatever term the IRB is.
That's the maximum we could do, ten years.
Ten?
Yeah.
And constitutional is twenty-two?
The CID.
Huh?
The CID is twenty-two.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
And so, in this case, you're being asked to approve the issuance of up to three point five million dollars for a project in El Dorado. It's a hotel, extended stay in the business park. So, out next to Holiday Inn Express.
Okay.
Do you wanna discuss the cost benefit of this part?
Cam. Linda, you might state your name and who you are.
I'm Linda Jolly with El Dorado Inc., and a part of the process in approval of the industrial revenue bonds are the state, to fulfill the state statutory requirement to do a cost benefit analysis of the project. And the form of that cost benefit is done at this, in this particular instance, was done by Wichita State University's Center for Economic Development and Business Research Center. And I think that in your packets on Thursday, you received a copy of that cost benefit analysis. And to start with, the business that's making application for the industrial revenue bond fills out a firm data sheet. And in that firm data sheet, they detail the project, give their projections of costs, construction labor, overall job creation, and also talk about what they think the revenue stream for this project will be over a ten-year period of time. WSU uses their model then and creates the report from that. And in this particular case, if you'll look on page three of fifteen, does everyone have those? I have some copies of that page if you don't.
We got an email from you, Tab, on Thursday or something, that's where you're gonna find it at, guys.
I think it's an email, and I believe it should be in the Dropbox as well.
It's in the Dropbox.
Okay.
It's in the, yeah, the Dropbox on the twentieth.
You have it?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Nick will need one.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
No, nobody else needs one.
Dave, did you, did you, did you say? Linda, I take one, from my, I had one, I lost.
And Linda, is this the project that also falls underneath our city policy where we already had the meeting with
Yes, it does.
you and me and the mayor? And ta-talk a little bit about that so the commission understands that as well.
A number of years ago, you set a policy for looking at the viability of projects that were coming forward, asking for tax abatement under either the constitutional method or under the industrial revenue bond method. And that process starts with the cost benefit being produced, and in turn, a special committee is to meet. It consists of the mayor, the city manager, and the fi-and the city clerk. And in this particular case, we also invited the finance director, as well as the president of El Dorado Inc. and the executive director. That policy requires that at least three people be present at the meeting, that they review the information. Two of those people need to be from the city. And in turn, they make a decision whether to move this on forward for commission approval or commission consideration. So, that was done. Another part of that process is that the applicant needs to pay a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, that has been done. So, we have, we have followed the guidelines for tax abatement applications to come to you. So, with that said, we went ahead and notified Bond Council for the city of El Dorado, who prepared the proper documentation and has been leading us through this process so that we meet the letter of the law and the statutes for the state of Kansas in granting this or approving it if you agree to do so. This particular project is asking for a hundred percent tax abatement for ten years. They would also receive sales tax exemption on construction materials, furniture fixture, and equipment that is purchased in the state of Kansas as a part of this project. So, the cost benefit analysis takes all those things into consideration. And basically, on page three of five, you have the overall analysis broken down by taxing entity and what their return on investment in this particular project would be if they give up the sales tax on the construction, furniture fixtures, and equipment, as well as the tax abatement for ten years at a hundred percent. The benefit ratio shows that for the city of El Dorado, for their return on investment is one, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-point-one percent of what they're gonna invest, and the benefit ratio is one to two-point-two-five. So, for every dollar we're giving up in real property tax revenue over the ten-year period of time, we should receive two dollars and twenty-five cents back. The Holiday Inn was the last project that we did under this criteria. They were very gracious last Friday to provide some numbers for their facility. And their return on investment, not taking into consideration the construction that came about and so forth, has been about two-point-seven-five cents per dollar that's invested. So, that project did perform well, and we'd have every expectation that this one would too.
Going to two-point-seven-five, so two-point-seven-five?
Two-point-seven-four is what I calculated on what they provided me.
Dollars for every dollar invested.
Two dollars and seventy-four cents for every dollar we invested. If you'd like to know a little bit more about the physical project, the owners, the proposed owners of this project are here, and I could introduce them if you wanna ask many questions about the facility.
Certainly. Please.
Okay. This is Hasu and Ray Bakhta. Ray, who's on the right, will be the resident occupant of the facility. And I'll let him tell you a little bit about the amenities that they plan to incorporate in this project.
Good evening, my name is Hasu Bakhta. This is my partner, Ray Bakhta. We're going to build a Days Inn Inn and Suites, which is an extended stay hotel, forty-two room, right next to the Holiday Inn Express.
My name is Aleah Bakhta. I will be the manager of the Days Inn Hotel and will be residing on the property with my family. My family and I have recently relocated to Kansas from California. We moved to Kansas to be closer to the family, and my wife and I prefer to raise our children in the Midwest, in a smaller city. My children are very much looking forward to enrolling in school in El Dorado and making new friends. We are very excited to be part of the El Dorado community, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys got any questions for him?
Approximately, when would you anticipate starting construction, providing everything, you know, passes this evening?
Sometime tomorrow afternoon.
Good answer. And, and how long do you anticipate construction until you're open for business?
We looked into where there were small businesses, like such as a big refinery, some other. We would like to be up and running within six months.
That's fast.
And did I understand, I mean, this is an extended stay, but you, people can rent by the night, correct?
Yes.
While it says that it's an extended stay, that doesn't mean that you can't just rent it for the evening?
Basically, the hotel will have, you've probably heard of Value Place?
Uh huh.
Where they have a cooktop, microwave. Basically, in this, we'll have a full kitchen with a stove. So, our guest that we are going to be working with, they requested the stove because some of them might stay in the long term.
Very good.
In your business plan, are you gonna have new people coming into this from the turnpike? Or is this gonna be people that would be coming to the area anyway?
We will be looking at a, probably just a mid-range travelers off I-135 or someone who's going to be working in a neighborhood, you know, maybe a construction company or majority might be the refinery or anything like that.
How much is your rooms gonna rent for approximately?
We're looking at anywhere from sixty-eight to seventy-four.
Okay.
Is that before tax?
Yeah.
I noticed in looking at that analysis from WSU, the average salary I had was like nineteen thousand, six, one, six for the first year. Are we gonna, you're looking for like six employees, if I read that right?
Yeah.
With an average salary around twenty thousand apiece?
Depending on how, you know, the occupancy of the hotel, how busy it is, and.
Okay. You guys.
Thanks, guys.
Great, thank you, you got any other questions for him?
I don't.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, gentlemen.
Did you have any additional questions on the cost benefit?
I could've made a mistake, Linda, 'cause I just got this and I was working up. I had a tax abatement estimate over the ten-year period at nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. Does that sound right to you?
No. Not on, not on the city's portion.
Okay, this would be on the total portion, it would be nine-thirty-nine.
That could be on the total, the city's portion, if you use what they're using, is about thirty-three thousand a year.
Yeah. So, so the total tax abatement for the county, the school district, and all that would be nine-thirty-nine?
Could be, I didn't calculate that.
Okay. And this is kinda getting the cart before the horse, but the CID is gonna benefit them about a quarter of a million dollars off their estimates.
That's what.
You know, that's kinda looking at this total package that we're talking about.
I had about that same number also.
Okay.
Other questions?
Do we ever, ten years is max, do we ever do any, have we ever done any five years? Or have you ever heard of any five years abatement versus ten?
Yes, there have been. I did some surveying of surrounding cities, some of them have done less. We've actually had a constitutional abatement since I've been here that I think was for three years. We did do Vomont Industries in a five-year increment also. So, it can be anything. Surrounding communities have used hundred percent five-year, hundred percent ten-year. The recent project in Augusta gave a hundred percent for ten years. And there's been step downs. The first, the Andover Holiday Inn did do a step down where they reduced the abatement by twenty percent each year. So, there's been all kinds of configurations.
What about the Days Inn and Andover?
When I talked to the assist, or the interim city manager, she wasn't aware of what had taken place with that facility.
All right. Guys, you got any other questions?
No, just wanted to, I guess, point out that we had, we did have a informational meeting last week. We had a lot of the hotel owners there. Kim Bell was there from the Bond Council, gave a great presentation explaining all of these benefits, all of these incentives to everyone that was at the meeting. So, it was an informational, informational meeting. Learned quite a bit about CID, about our NRP program, and about the IRB that we're looking at here as well. So, I think some of that might've been in the newspaper too. But I just wanted to let everyone know that there has been an opportunity to review these benefits leading up to tonight.
And it isn't just lodging facilities, but there's a lot of other businesses in town that have an opportunity to use some of these programs. So, we did have a few other people at the meeting that were interested in learning more about them.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, do we have anyone else to?
You need to open a public hearing.
Okay, you're right. So, at this point, one of our required actions is to hold a public hearing concerning the issuance of these industrial revenue bonds. So, at this time, I will open that public hearing. If anybody'd like to come forward and. Need your name and address, please.
John Pyle, twenty-five, twenty-five West Central Avenue, El Dorado, Kansas. And listening to Linda on the ten-year abatement for the taxes, I believe I heard something somewhere around nine-hundred thousand. Is that correct?
That's the total.
Total, college, city, county.
Yeah, college, city, county, everything.
School district.
Okay. All right, we got the Wichita State Cost Benefit Analysis Thursday morning, and I've been working on it pretty much ever since that time. And I came up with a different number, but I haven't had a chance to verify it and whether or not I produced that number correctly or not. But we, if, if I can make a motion to reschedule this hearing or do a special hearing in a week from tonight to give us time to go over the, the information that we have and are waiting for from the city clerk, would that be possible?
You said waiting for, can you explain that?
They have, we picked up the Wichita State Cost Benefit Thursday morning, and I requested a cost benefit on the Holiday Inn Express.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, he requested approximately fifteen-hundred pages worth of items. And I returned his call today, per the Kansas Open Records Act, you have to respond in seventy-two hours. I did that. He, I, I have been waiting on a call, he said he got it after five, so he was gonna call me back later. But that, because I couldn't call out just the, the one piece, I had to wait for his approval to just give him the one piece as opposed to the other fifteen-hundred pages.
Okay.
I wasn't looking forward to going through fifteen-hundred pages before this meeting tonight. And I don't look forward to that before a subsequent meeting if we're granted that. But I, I would like a motion to maybe have a special meeting in a, in a week. Ray Shura, the Super Eight Hotel Owner is not here tonight, he's out of state, and he'll be back tomorrow, and.
So, you're just looking for a little more time to digest the information?
Yes, yes. I'd like to be accurate with what I present tonight.
So you can take a position on it, yeah.
Because there's quite a discrepancy between what Linda said was the accumulated tax abatement amount than what I show on, on the spreadsheet that I worked on today.
And I don't, I think Linda has only addressed the city's portion. You, you, I think you need to reference the mayor's number. That's only the mayor's number, no one else has said nine-hundred thousand, that's just Mike. Linda has just spoke to the city's portion, and I think it was thirty-three thousand a year. And so, I don't know, you know, I don't know what you've come up with, but I think we need to make sure that everyone understands what everyone's saying. And so, reference the mayor's number or Linda's number at thirty-three, if you would.
Okay. To get more accurate information, I, I would like to make a motion to have a special meeting before you consider this approval.
Guys, how do you feel about that?
I think, I mean, I'm not right now necessarily in favor of that, but I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say.
How big of a discrepancy are you talking about, Mr. Pop? Okay, I have, let's see if I've got it here. I'm showing, I went to the Butler County Assessor's Office Friday and went through a hypothetical with some numbers on how the taxes would be created. And I used the Wichita State University report to pick out numbers out of it and then put in the spreadsheet. And I'm showing for the ten-year taxes that would be lost if, if you approve this, one million, two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Now, we have a overhead of this spreadsheet, I can go through it, but.
Let's just, I mean, to clarify, we're not, today, we're collecting zero tax on that property. So, we're not losing, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't want anyone to walk away from this thinking that the city's losing a million dollars today. We're collecting zero on the property as it sits now. So, if we collect zero on the property tomorrow, it's a net even.
Yeah, it's an, it would be an opportunity loss of taxes. I know we're not collecting anything right now.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify so there wasn't any confusion.
So, the number you're coming up with is two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand? The ten-year number is. Is two-forty-six? One million, two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand nine. One million, two-hundred-and-forty-six. Yeah, two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. And could you address maybe the rescheduling of the hearing first? And then, if not, I'll go ahead with the presentation I had.
I feel like we need to finish hearing everyone before we make that decision.
Well, I, when did you actually get your information?
I got it Thursday morning.
Thursday morning?
Thursday morning, and from the clerk's office. And then, Friday, I spoke to the county ass, for the Butler County Assessor's Office.
I, I think, to be fair, in my opinion, to all the motel owners in El Dorado, they should be given enough time to present their case. That's, that's where I'm coming from, and I think it's been too quick to say Thursday, here it is. The meeting we had, I was hoping would be something that we would be discussing that, but it was just a general discussion. So, these guys haven't had any information to work off of to be considered. Because I think the, the whole reason for. Because I think the, the whole reason for consideration is how does that affect our businesses? And that's gotta be a component along with all the positive things that go along with this.
And I think we need to be respectful of the timing of the gentleman wanting to do the project to, you know, we've kinda prolonged this a little bit and.
Why, why didn't we give this guy more time?
I.
That's where I'm at.
But I, I'm not willing to make that decision this second without hearing everyone else. If there are other people that, I guess I'm not sure what everyone's here for, but if they have something to say in regards to this.
What's one week in this process? That's what I would say. Or can we figure out to the next meeting?
I think to Chase's point, it'd be nice to hear what everyone has to say that's here. I mean, they, they took the time to come down to the meeting tonight, so I'd like to hear what they have to say rather than making a knee-jerk correction at this point and putting off the meeting.
Yeah, we have other hotel owners here present at the meeting.
That's good, I see that. How many motel owners are here that would like to postpone this a week?
I'd like for, I'd like for them to come up and say why.
That's the appropriate way to do it.
Okay. Thank you, John, go ahead. Our discussion is gonna be why we should put this off a week. So you, whoever wants to.
No, 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 no.
What, what do you wanna have a discussion on?
No, it's, it's a public hearing for this IRB.
You certainly don't decide that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Anyone can say whatever they wanna say in regards to this matter.
You're asking these gentlemen to put on a program probably they're not prepared for because of the timing of this.
We're not asking them to put on a program, but if they have thoughts about this, they're welcome to come say it. But we're not gonna tell them what the discussion, I mean.
Mayor, this public hearing was posted several weeks ago. So, and, and in the public hearing notice, it told them that they could come and request the documents from my office. And no one came until last Thursday.
When was that published, Tabitha?
It was published right after our last meeting.
It was decided on, in the January meeting. So.
Oh, yeah, the January meeting.
January twentieth was when you announced the public hearing would be this evening.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead and come up.
Come on in.
Absolutely.
Okay, respected mayor.
Yeah, we need your name and address.
My name is Mike Bart, Stardust Motel Owner.
Okay.
And the, the Vice President of the Hotel Owners Association here. John is the president. And as a respected mayor, commission, city officials, and the citizens of El Dorado, I do understand that everyone's time is important. So to your point, Mr. Chase, I do agree that we should do it, but in the manner it was done in the past, the short notice that was given to us has created a little bit of a hard burn. We are not anti-city or anti-business, but we just need more time to present our business case so that we can come with more facts instead of rushing to a conclusion or judgment. If you ask me, we have all the information, but we still need some, some other information that we don't have the facts about. If we're gonna talk about the room availability in town and you don't have some data from other hotels in town which is missing, which has been requested, yes, today John went there and we did not get all the information. Like John said, he's not gonna go through the fifteen hundred pages report right away. We need to digest the information, get all the hotel owners, just like we are trying to come in public and discuss this. We also need some time to chew on the data.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So there's fifteen hundred pages of documentation that pertains to the Days Inn?
No, there is not. They requested the resolution and ordinance pertaining to the Days Inn and the cost benefit analysis. They requested the entire IRB paperwork for Holiday Inn Express along with that cost benefit analysis. That alone is six, five to six hundred pages. Plus, that was an estimate because I wasn't going to count all of them on the off-chance they might not wanna pay for that. Then the final thing they requested was not a hotel. They requested the IRB for BG Products and the cost benefit analysis for that. And that is an extensive project, project that was, is well over a thousand pages of information.
I'm sorry, Mike, I just, the fifteen hundred pages through.
No, that's fine. Like I said, it's overall, but overall, here's the thing, if we can do a business case, here's the thing. But getting eighty percent accurate data, which we already have, we have done our homework. And as I said, we want the business to thrive in the community, but we want to get, make sure that we get the facts right. And for that to happen, we need at least a week time. If, if you think everyone's time is important, just like I do believe as well, everyone's time is important. If you want to do something, we can present, but it's gonna be eighty to ninety percent accurate data. If you want to go through that, if you want to still go through the presentation, we can do that. But if you want to still have another hearing, we can do that as well. So it's up to you guys how you want to do it. And we are open to the suggestion. And like overwhelmingly, all the hotel owners in town have suggested that we need some more time because of the, just like Mr. Mayor said, you know, the way it has been, the engagement has been missing. The engagement from the, the officials who have been present in this pro-business, which is fine. I love that aspect of it. But engaging the other businesses in town to get their feedback, get, keeping them in the loop to make sure that we are aware of the facts wasn't proactive, it was more reactive. And that is the reason we are asking for this extension. However, if you feel like we should have a presentation, we are ready, we'll do it. If you want to still see the facts further down and you want to postpone this second after the presentation, we can do that as well. So the hotel team here, which includes, we would like to welcome also the new investors as well. If they want to invest and make a business case, which is sound, why not, more than a welcome. But it's up to you guys how you want to decide this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else like come forward?
There were quite a few hands up.
Yeah.
Wade Wilkinson, forty-five, fifty-five Westview. I just gotta, I gotta say through this whole process, I'm just, I'm completely disappointed in a certain individual for creating a lynch mob against businesses. I went through the same process back in two thousand and six. And I did receive IRBs for the hotel. The decision to grant IRBs was based off of a feasibility study that the city hired through a third party. It was completely independent. Nobody in town had any say in it. It was a third party that came in and said, hey, this town needs this many hotel rooms. This is what you need to give them in order to get it. And that's what we based our information off of. These gentlemen are coming to our town basing their decision to invest up to three and a half million dollars into our community based off of a third-party independent study saying that we need this. Granted, this study was done back in two thousand and eight, but at that time, it said we needed seventy-nine rooms. They're only filling forty-two percent, forty-two of them.
Seventy-nine additional rooms?
Seventy-nine additional rooms back in two thousand and eight. Now, that's right after we got done at sixty-three. I, I'm, I'm trying to remain professional through this whole thing. You know, the organization of secret meetings and email to blast, you know, people such as myself throughout this entire process is ridiculous. You know, the El Dorado Hotel Owners Association is completely ridiculous. It's not equally represented. I, for one, seeing as how they're gonna compete right next to me, I, I for one am in all favor of bringing another hotel to town. I've always been pro-business. I always will be pro-business. This is not gonna hurt the city of El Dorado. Study says two and a quarter for every dollar that's invested by these gentlemen. The other organizations that are here representing themselves asking for another week is ridiculous. If you want me to, I can make up whatever number you want me to and tell you that, hey, I need three more months to make a decision on this. This is free enterprise. They can sit up here and they can complain as much as they want. The Days Inn that they're bringing in is a total different facility than what we're comparing it to. Mike, there is no need to put this off. Commission, there is no need to put this off. It has been published in the paper per law. They've had enough time to gather the information that they need. They took too long. This is not, this isn't your fault. This is their fault that they weren't prepared. These gentlemen are ready to invest three point five million dollars. They made the comment, we're ready to break ground tomorrow. Why are you wanting to stop them from progressing? I'll answer any questions you got.
So you guys at the Holiday Inn, when you built Holiday Inn Express, got a ten-year tax abatement?
Yes.
Have you been able to keep track of your, kind of your alternative benefit to El Dorado through sales tax, bed tax?
I have, I have.
Information.
Here. Since we opened, we have paid seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in sales tax. We've also paid a little over a half million dollars in bed tax. Other than that, you know, we've been able to do other things to support the community. When the city wanted to build a football stadium in town, I was the first one to jump up and offer free hotel rooms to the construction crew. Totaled over thirty thousand dollars in free hotel rooms. This helps the community. Once you get another hotel in a business park that you guys have had for over fifteen years that there's only three businesses in right now, get another hotel. You're starting to make it a point, point of interest. Offer ten-year tax abatement to a restaurant. I believe the feasibility study towards the back says, hey, we need a restaurant. We need a truck stopper gas station. We need this, we need that. Don't try to make the decision on how you want it to be when we already pay somebody else to make that decision for us. It's a recommendation. These people know what they're talking about.
Wade, first of all, I did vote for that for you. The only issue that I ever had with that was that it's hard to sit down and say, here it is on Thursday night, we need a decision on Monday. That's the thing that I had. And the two things that really helped me in your deal, yours was an upscale and there was a market niche for that. We didn't have anybody in the industrial part, so that was a positive. BG said they wouldn't be here unless we had that. That's what I was told, so I voted for it.
I wish you would have admitted that back in two thousand and seven in front of the camera. Because I believe I have, I believe, no, no, just what you said right there.
Okay.
Because I have a DVD of that entire meeting.
Okay.
That it was nothing but tearing me apart for absolutely no reason.
Okay.
Mike.
I'd like to watch that with you.
Oh, God, it would be so much fun. I'll bring the popcorn.
Okay.
So with all that said.
I voted for that, Wade.
You, you did vote for that, Mike, but you weren't in favor of it. And behind, now, there's a lot more to that. And say what you wanna say, Mike.
Okay.
You know, we'll just, people can ask me, people can ask you, however you wanna handle it.
Nobody likes to pay taxes.
Okay.
So I'm saying that the best kind of tax is somebody else can pay. And we have to be careful about being consistent in how to do that.
Okay.
And that's, I'm just trying to be a responsible person on this end, Wade.
Okay. So nobody likes to pay taxes?
Right.
Okay.
Do you like to pay taxes?
I pay my fair share of taxes.
Okay.
Okay. I pay my fair share of taxes.
Yeah.
I pay my fair share of taxes, sales tax, income tax, property tax, I pay my fair share. But the thing, that's not what, if you're gonna abate this project, which you should, which is the smart thing to do because a third party told you to do it, you're not losing that money. How much money did I just tell you we brought in in sales tax revenue? How about bed tax revenue? How much money did we generate in the economy for people stopping off on the turnpike?
And I would say thank you.
Well, and that's great. Extend that courtesy to another person who wants to invest three point five million dollars into our community.
Yeah.
You know, some other abated projects in this community.
And Wade, let me tell you this, as far as on my part, we're asking for a week. That's all we're asking.
You've had plenty of time, Mike.
This is the first time that I've sat down and had this discussion.
No, it's not. You had a meeting last week, Mike.
When?
You know what was coming up to you here. You had a meeting last week with Kim Bell that discussed all this information.
Not this information. We talked about the program.
Mike, you knew that this was coming to you in commission.
Okay.
I think Tabitha has something real quick.
Mr. Mayor, you've had this information since January when you met with us originally for the meeting and on January twentieth.
It's not about my information.
So I.
But you have repeatedly said that you have not had the information. You have had the information since January.
And I think that it was published in the paper and everyone was told that they could come get it in the city clerk's office. Now, we did not go house to house and say, by the way, if you wanna read the business plan of a potential new business in, in town, we have it. But we put it in the paper. I mean, we, if you're interested, I mean, Julie, how many stories you written about?
Linda, did you find when that was put in the paper?
I mean, I guess, I guess, a question that I have. A question that I have is, as we move forward, as we, beyond this hotel issue, as we move forward and we have other businesses wanting to come to town, which we all understand is a need to, to bring more business to this town. As this happens, every time AutoZone wants to come to town, are we gonna convene?
A lynch mob?
O'Reilly's and bumper to bumper and they're, and everyone else and ask them if they think it's okay? Or if Andover State Bank wants to open a bank in El Dorado, do we need to, you know, get permission or vet it through the other banks to make that happen? I mean, this is an opportunity. Their state, they're, they're abiding by the laws allowed them in the state of Kansas.
We're, what I would say to you on that bill is that in those names there, if they're getting a tax abatement from us, yes, we do. And, and they are competing with people in town that do pay taxes. And I'm saying that we need time to look at that and make sure that that fits our deal. Now, if it takes a week, what's a week in this process?
They're, they're competing with people in town that have the exact same opportunities that they have.
Can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
The difference between that is AutoZone was gonna come to town no matter what.
Yeah.
You're in the position right now that you're asking these gentlemen to come to town.
Yeah.
And this is what we're gonna offer you to build this project. They're not coming in off the street and saying, hey, we wanna build a hotel here and we want ten-year tax abatement. They have the paperwork from your study that says that they need that.
Yeah.
So why pay a third-party independent group to produce that for you and then completely go against what they recommend? That's anti-business, Mike.
I'm not going against that, Wade. I'm asking for everybody to have a equal opportunity.
To do that.
I'm, I'm, I'm not doing that at all. I'm asking to give a week. I haven't made a decision on this.
Does anybody else have any questions for me?
I don't, but thank you.
Mm-hmm.
One thing you forgot, Wade, you did also provide some jobs.
I did. Thank you.
And I thank you for that.
Thanks, Wade.
Yes.
Again, my, my, my name is Mike. And whatever you guys decide, that's fine. But we spoke the honest truth here. We are not up to any other business to attack anyone. I know Ray has been vocal in the past. I think that's what he's referring to. When Holiday Inn Express came, I wasn't here in the town. And I like all the mayors and all the commissions to be treated with respect and no vicious attack on mayor. Just like what happened right now, I don't appreciate that because I've taken it offline. You know, that is one thing. If you don't want to postpone this.
What did you say? I didn't hear, I didn't understand.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, we all pay the share, fair share of taxes, right?
Right.
We pay sales tax, we pay a commission tax, we pay property tax. So it's, depends upon what taxes you're talking about. All the owners here are not against the business. Anyone can build a Taj Mahal or a Hilton Hotel or Days Inn, there's no problem. But it has to be based on their own merit. That's what we are saying. That's all we're saying. Don't provide tax abatement if that's the case. If not, then we have a business case. If we don't want to postpone this, we can make an exception. And we can present right now the facts. If it's up to you, want to present the facts or you want to postpone, it's up to you. But we're not gonna press, we're not delaying the process because we have agenda. It's honest fact that we don't have enough time to get all the information. In the last, I will tell you one more thing. In the last three days or four days since we have been vocal, there has been retaliation on me. There has been retaliation on me. People are trying to check my permits for the Stardust Motel and the apartments I have. This is not professional. It's done by the city official here. How much permits I had, somebody pulled the permits on me. Totally unacceptable. Given the timing of this process, somebody is pulling the permits. on me, how much remodeling I did, and then I come to know this, and then people don't appreciate that. I, I won't appreciate that retaliation. If this is the way, none of the business will stay in town who are existing here. How many businesses have gone out of business, restaurant-wise or anything else in the town? Because, does anyone know that? Small mom and pop, we're not talking up-chain, like Holiday Inn Express or Hilton Hotels. Yes, they have deep pockets and they can survive. We're talking about people who are small business in town. How many businesses have gone down in town, sir? Forty-five or more? We can present the facts after this meeting, we have the whole spreadsheet, I C did the research. So it's survival of the small businesses. Now, like somebody said here, this is not upscale motel. This is gonna compete in the price segment for mean, super eight, and Best Western, which already has more rooms available for last five years. Interesting fact, another thing, somebody mentioned here, and I'm not here to attack anyone, we are professionals here, we want to talk facts. The two thousand and eight market assessment, somebody said that hotel owners, Hotel Owners Association is ridiculous here, that market assessment of two thousand and eight is garbage. Two thousand and eight market assessment, you want to put the facts, I can put the facts in the presentation right now, it's garbage. Estimated, the words estimated has been used hundred times in that report, okay? The report is missing Sunset Owners Motel in there. Can you see? Staggering. Kansas Cabin is excellent, excellent estate. If you want to make it fair and factual, make it right. Make a right business case. Nobody's anti-business. I have businesses here in Kansas and Nebraska, and, and some other places now. And I'm not anti-business, I want businesses, but the fundamentals are missing. You provide tax abatements to industries like BG Product, hundred businesses, hundred, hundred, hundred employees, yes, two hundred employees, yes. And Park City is a good example, Derby is an example, where the aerospace industries are coming to town, and they create jobs and that brings, brings a boom to the restaurants, and also the up-chain, you know, and you get Applebee's. Right now, if you open Applebee's, what's gonna happen? It's gonna go belly up, because we don't have the base, the foundation, because people don't have the income to spend the money at Applebee's. Or Huddle House that we had here. I would love to have IHOP too. Seriously, I want IHOP. Because you know what? We are I-35, if person goes from I-Emporia and is going all the way to Wichita, he wants to stay here, yes. We have not done a good job of promoting our business on turnpikes. And we have one billboard on exit seventy-one, not a single one on seventy-six. How do I feel? I'm not against business, but the fundamentals are missing. How often have been proactive? Let's ask a simple fact, how many, how many people in the business, you know, Chambers of Commerce or some of the ink we have here, have engaged the businesses in town to get their feedback? I've been vocal, I've been telling ten times, I'll pay my billboard at Stardust Motel for free to put a sign for the city. I don't want the money. I will give the land...
We appreciate that.
Yeah, so, you know, making a big hoopla that we're anti-business is a shame. Nobody's anti-business. But the facts are facts, nobody can deny the facts that forty-five restaurants or some other retailers have gone out of business. I feel sorry for Terry, has anyone done an exit interview with Terry? Terry, the guy who owned Oklahoma Barbecue? He used to have a mascot with his pig on, come and eat my, all, all you can eat buffet. That was a sign that he's in trouble. What did we do, nothing, none. These are the people we need to provide incentives so that they can get the fundamentals right. I mean, getting another business here, yes, bed tax is gonna go up. If you do the math, the ADR, the average daily rate of a premium hotel, I don't, see if I say Holiday Inn Express, somebody's gonna say, oh, he's attacking me. A premium hotel ADR is always high, it's more than a hundred dollars. Yes, biological sense, your ADR, your bed tax is gonna go up. Tomorrow you have another hotel, your bed tax gonna, but at what expense? Somebody else gonna belly up in three years' time. Have you thought about it? That's what we're saying. Have we done a study which is more concrete? I understand all the assessments are subjective, I respect that part, right? But we have a qualitative, qualitative data versus a quantitative data. You know, we have more facts for last five years, and it tells very clearly, the room occupancy is less than fifty percent if you spread out even for the whole year. Yes, we have two, two months of, you know, peak, you know, spike, because of the refinery business. But other times, you go and walk around the place here in the town and you know what I'm saying, you know, we don't have the fundamentals in place to have daily walk-ins, you're just at the mercy of turnpike, that's all. You don't have any industries who want to stay here. And that's where I want, we want as a team to work hard towards getting that fundamental right, getting more manufacturing sectors to come here and invest, and they eat daily. I see that happening in Park City all the time, I see that happening in Derby. They got it right. They got it right. I mean, yes, ten years abatement, it's good that we want to invite the businesses, but I would like to suggest that we invite manufacturing who creates jobs, and keep the jobs here, and feed the restaurant sections, and have corporate clients coming and staying here from the manufacturing that feeds their, their lodging business as well. If you want, I can do a presentation, a quick presentation, and then it's up to you guys to decide, and we will take whatever, you know, feedback you give us in a professional manner, but we never said anything bad about anyone, nobody. Maybe Ray is vocal, Ray has been vocal in the past when Days Inn happened, but doesn't mean that we don't respect people. So there is no mudslinging going on here, so I want to make that very straight. We respect people and we live in a great city of El Dorado. If people have passion, I would like them to support us and be part of the Hotel Owners Association, give the facts. If not, we have to go to, you know, Tabitha and some of the people to get that information. Even if you don't get a second motion today, we can still present the facts, but like I said, our data is more accurate than market assessment done in two thousand and eight. Absolutely, there is no brain in there. If you want, I can give a five, five-minute presentation, a quick one, and then you decide what you want to do.
Gentlemen, I, in, in my opinion, I've sat down, and there is a lot of positives for doing this. The one piece that I am concerned with on the other side is how that's gonna affect the other motels in town, and really thinking that process through, and I just think that giving it a week for them to get their program together...
Sounds to me like they've got their program together, he said he's ready to present his deal.
He said eighty or ninety percent. Now, you know, that's, we're talking about Thursday, and this is Monday night here. And I don't know how they got eighty or ninety percent.
I, I'm saying, another thing I can say so we can come across and have a common ground here, is, is eighty to ninety percent, right? And then we postpone the hearing till next time, at least I can get through the presentation, if that's what you want, because I already talked a lot, so why not go with the flow and get the facts?
Let's take a look at what you have.
I don't know, Scott, can you just help me with the presentation, please?
Is it gonna be on here?
Okay, can you look at the presentation as well?
Do what?
Can you look at the presentation?
Yeah, we're looking at it on these screens.
Perfect, thank you. So we put a, you know, some of the information at a high level, and then, you know, leave your, we can brainstorm after the presentations, and if you have any questions, myself or John and some of the people will be able to answer questions end of the presentation. So, short-term gain, yes, city is profiting from selling the land, absolutely. But then, you know, like people, somebody talked about free enterprise. That's the beauty of free enterprise, you sell the land at seven hundred thousand versus getting a one seventy-two thousand land, perfect example.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you make sure you stay near the mic, so that people at home can hear you?
Okay.
Thank you.
Closer to the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, collect bed tax, yes. It's very logical that the bed tax is gonna go up, but at whose expense in three years' time? Nobody's ready to answer this. If you see the bed tax, which I'm gonna present this, it, there's, you see a spike, and the spike you see is not because of other hotels, you see because of the high ADR for a premium hotel, it's misleading information. Bed tax doesn't correlate with room available or room occupancy. Long-term opportunity missed, Nick, just like we talked about, you need to have a foresight to bring more industry that create jobs and thriving economy. Tax abatement and CID models are more for big industry with long-term gains for the city and the community. Yes, exceptions can be made. Education opportunity missed, like we talked, John talked about the, the ten-year tax abatement, which goes to the bucket of community college as well as the Circle District, so you have that opportunity missed, and that is almost, we'll talk about that in the next. Visibility on the turnpike, we need, we need to get the game going on the visibility and turnpike. We are, we are at a critical artery of seventy-seven and thirty-five. We haven't done a good job of doing a hoopla. How many people have told me that they don't know about exit seventy-six? I'm, my hotel is, has two billboards, I split the hotel into starters and the inn just to get more people around. I'm spending money left and right to get the business, and I did that, guess what happened? Since we haven't done a good job at it, the turnpike went from twenty-four hour shift to one shift. If you would have been proactive and get more traffic, the turnpike would have been benefited, the downtown city of El Dorado would have been benefited, and I would have been benefited. Nobody came to my help, I did everything on my own, my money. So how will I feel?
I mean, my question is, did you request help and you were turned down? I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Yes, I've been very vocal, I have everything on documentation through emails from last two years. But you know what? I also look at myself and say, hey, you know, I should be a better, more proactive citizen to engage in the process.
I understand that, Mike, I'm just saying, I mean, if, I, I just, that, I was just curious.
Yes, so how will I feel if I get, I would like to get things subsidized for myself because there is nobody to help me. Or Terry for that matter, when now his belly business has gone up, belly up. What's in it for the citizens with this whole process? High room rates. If you see, this has been a redistribution of the rooms. Yes, Holiday Inn doesn't impact the other businesses as much because they up the chain. Point well taken, totally fair. With this new one, it's gonna be a redistribution, especially it's gonna impact the super eight more than anyone else. And if you lower the prices, then you start competing with the independent hotel as well. Ten-year tax abatement, we talked about, chokes additional education money, that I'm talking about Butler Community College and Circle District. Potential education funding missed for last ten years, if we don't have this going toward the city funding, education funding is almost half a million to one million dollars. And this is a rough estimate based on...
Can you explain that?
That is what I'm saying, it's eighty to ninety percent accurate right now, so we...
Well, but I mean, explain that.
And it's gonna come in the spreadsheet.
Potential education funding missed opportunity, five hundred thousand to a million, I don't understand that.
Yeah, and I assure you in the last slide I have that, so we, we'll give you all the handouts, so you have all the facts, and John has done some research on that, in such a short notice. So opportunity lost again, dollars can be diverted, that's fine, but if you see education funding for the ten years has a strong correlation with reducing unemployment and drug-related problems in the city. Imagine if you get educational funding for ten years, what do, what good it does to the community in terms of getting people up to speed and raising the income group, where people are getting more jobs, whether inside or outside the community, and spending the money within the city limits to upper-scale motel, restaurants like Applebee's, we don't have Applebee's, I mean, look at Derby. Derby is a small town, but they have Olive Garden. Why? Because they have done research, they have some higher income group there as well.
Applebee's won't come here because the turnpike is restricted access. That's why Applebee's won't come here.
And you're right, Nick, absolutely, because it, turnpike has a non-competing clause. I've gone through that pain myself. But you, we can always put a big, huge billboard on the side of the farming land, and a lot of farmers who are in El Dorado, ready to give their land to promote the business. A very good example is Cassidy, just before El Dorado, they have small billboards, mini billboards, just to survive that mini town, they have billboards not on the turnpike, but on the side, if you notice. Just if you travel from Emporia to El Dorado, you will see some small, mini billboards on the side, not on the turnpike because of the non-competing clause. So that might help us a little bit, but like I said, Applebee's was an example I'm giving, but the intent is, if we don't have people who have good education and we don't raise the income group, and we wait for ten years, because after that, the funding is gonna kick in, the tax, the tax is gonna kick in. Ten years, we are losing that, almost a half a generation of people who are potential leaders in the town and raise the income, who can invest. And that's the intent of this whole point there, the last point, raise income levels and have, to have high-end restaurants and all that, just kind of example there. What's in it for the business owners? Well, we are not creating additional demand. Give an example to me, I, I'm wrong, we are not creating additional demand, yes, we're talking turnpike, but we're trying to keep our eggs in one basket, turnpike or refinery. What else? BG Product, yes, a hundred jobs, but they, we had to make a dent into the whole thing, and that's not happening. There will be a redistribution of this whole occupancy within the hotels, especially with this mid to low tier coming, it's just gonna redistribute the whole process instead of, you know, increasing the occupancy, yes, bed tax is gonna go up. Building another hotel will force ADR to go up, because now what's gonna happen is you redistribute, redistribute the rooms, right? And other hotels have, instead of fifty percent occupancy, forty percent. So what they have to do to survive? They're gonna go up on their rates just to have, keep up with the operating cost. You know, and so, there is a guarantee, there will be a possibility in next three years that somebody's gonna file for bankruptcy or change the flagships. And we want to make sure that who will be accounted for that. A very good example is, is Hutchinson. There is a property which has been auctioned, the brand inn, Quality Inn is getting auctioned, more than seventy, eighty rooms. Last week, I saw email coming, it's getting auctioned. So yes, they, and in fact, they have this fairgrounds, you know, and despite all the situation, the fairground doesn't help, it helps and gives that business for the two weeks, or three weeks, right, during the fairgrounds when we have this, but, just like the refinery, but we don't want peak volumes, we want even business, that's where we have a challenge, we have peaks and valleys. This is what, this is what the situation looks like right now for all the hotels, if you see, this data is from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen, so it's five, four to five years, so to speak. And you see on the left, on the Y-axis, you have rooms available a month, so we have almost seventy-eight hundred rooms available a month in the town, minus a few hotels we don't have information on. And you see, there is, every year you see some peaks, there are three peaks, three to four peaks you see, and those are refineries. So you see a trend here that we have peaks and valleys.
Sir, so are you telling me, according to this graph, when the turnaround was in full swing, we did not have one hundred percent room occupancy in El Dorado?
Exactly, and that's staggering, because what happens is, you, and you have person, for example, staying at Best Western, right, and he pays, whatever the rate is, and eventually he goes to the Eagle and Hotel, right?
Go ahead, explain, you have a message.
Come to the mic, if you're gonna explain, please. Okay, my experience, I'm John Pyle, twenty-five twenty-five West Central Avenue, and what this graph shows, the part, the lower part in the green, with the green verticals, shows the peaks of six hotels in town, it does not include the Holiday Inn Express. Nor does it the cabins.
Kansas cabins.
Kansas cabins, but the area above the green lines are empty rooms, or vacant rooms that could, that are available and could be sold. And we estimate we have two hundred and eighty-eight rooms available in this six hotel group, and a hundred and forty-four of those are, on the average, vacant daily for the year. Okay, and...
Gentlemen, I'm sorry, I find it hard to believe, because I work for a company that's very involved in the turnaround out here, and they bring workers in for the turnaround out here, and they were staying in Wichita, and they were staying in, they were staying in trailers out at the lake, because they said there were, there was no room at the inn.
Well, what, sir, what happens is that some companies may need a block of rooms, five or ten rooms or fifteen rooms, and we get down to the, during turnaround, we may have ten, fifteen rooms at most, one day or two days, we have companies coming in and going, and we have to schedule in another group, so sometimes those, there are, those guests will go to Wichita to try to find housing, Augusta, maybe which, yeah.
I'm not talking about two or three, I'm talking about dozens of individuals that weren't, they, they, they're migrant workers, they come up here, individuals from Louisiana, from Mississippi, from Arkansas, from, and there was no place for them to stay.
Maybe on the weekend.
And this wasn't hearsay.
And see, I think that's what...
I talked to these people, not... I talked to these people, not all of them, but I talked to many of them. Where can we find a place to sleep?
And, Nick, these bar graphs are showing a month. And so, they're not days of the week, they're not days, and so, what, what we have learned at the CTC or the CVB is that weekends are the empty ones. So, if you're at ninety percent, you even have people staying on a weekend in the turnaround. Now, I mean, so you have people coming, you have some people that are just here during the week and go home in the weekend. And so, I think what you're saying can absolutely be true, but this is a month at a time. You're not getting twenty-eight days, or thirty days, or thirty-one days. You're not looking at that, you're looking at every night in a month, so each one of those is thirty days.
Yep, you're right. And, uh, wh- what this data is, and another, you make a very good point. The last good turnaround in this city, and anyone can challenge me on this one.
You close that mic, Mike.
I'm sorry. The last good turnaround, I mean, I bought the business in two thousand ten, and I was expecting, you know, some kind of business. But my property honestly had a lot of rooms to, you know, a lot of improvements to be done, but I did not get the business till last year. You get a turnaround, the turnaround people are also getting smarter. Uh, if you see after two thousand ten, the major turnaround was for forty-five days to sixty days. That was October, November, that you see that big peak. Before that, you have, it used to be in March, and then October, but then they started skipping. They started skipping, you know, one turnaround, they used to do just one, to save the money there, you know, and I'm sure a lot of people can collaborate with, you know, verify that whole situation there. But, uh, now, that was, the biggest peak you see is the one which you see in the end. But like, uh, the gentleman said here, uh, this is reflected in the month. And sometimes, what I'm hearing from the franchise, because I don't have a franchise, but when I put this data together, the franchise said they had to block the rooms like they said, but also some people checked out, because now that one hotel is costly, so they go and look for cheaper room. Or, they go and stay at the rental property, or the trailer like you said. So, that is a true reflection of the information given by the six hotels in town, independent and franchise. But it does give a directional data where it says, hey, you have three turnarounds, and the rest of the time, you're still struggling to get the business you would love to. Uh, overall, it tells the story that we have at least fifty percent of rooms available. Uh, just to give a number, we have one forty-four rooms available per day. Average per day, uh, just between us, and, uh, interesting fact, uh, if I go to the next one. So, this is the, the, the bed tax we talked about, and if you see that big spike, and you will see another big spike if you have another business in town, just not because of the room occupancy, because of the redistribution of the revenues, which now, city is not gonna be impacted, the business is gonna be impacted. Market assessment, we talked about it, I don't want to dwell on it, I want to make this quick on this one. The twenty, during twenty, twenty fifteen lodging business case of twen- two thousand eight estimated study is potentially risky when you're running a great city like El Dorado. Highly subjective and selective, just to give examples, we talked about Sunset and Kansas Cabin, which is extended stay, and all the rooms are remodeled, by the way. Market assessment, two thousand forecast, and lodging through two thousand eight through two thousand fifteen, room available versus rented actuals show a huge disconnect. So, now we have a two thousand eight study, a forecasted study, right? And now we have the actuals from there on till date, is a huge disconnect. Uh, if you see the study that says, uh, you, you, we need more rooms and more rooms, but the facts on the ground are different. Uh, city has gained on transient taxes over the years, simply because of the need, due to the additional subsidized hotel in twenty thi- two thousand seven that has significant high ADR, and also other city hotels, ADR have gone up to keep up the operating cost. So, that is where the market assessment feedback is. Uh, our conclusion, and, uh, so we have open rooms available, no additional demand to build hotel using incentives, or hurt existing hospitality businesses. Uh, market two thousand eight assessment is obsolete, new hotel business case analysis, oh, by the way, this is also interesting. Uh, the, this is, this is the fact that came out from the assessment. If you see, uh, uh, what was presented was that, uh, average daily hour rate for the new hotel in town would be sixty-eight to seventy-four dollars, right? If that is the case, we just, uh, we, uh, the projection for ten years is around half a million dollars, and it just goes to six million, a half, point six million. If that's the case, we went back using ADR based on fifty-five dollars. Occupancy is not more than fifty-five, forty-five to fifty-five percent, so it's clearly in the line of what we are doing business. Same, it's the same, it's the same, you see the same theme getting recurring, it's been gonna be forty-five to fifty-five percent. There are some exceptions, which is great, but if you see all the hotels in combined, then you will have somebody who's gonna go belly up because of the situation. And we don't, that is where this, uh, projection, you know, projection at fifty percent based on the study, the Wichita State twenty fifteen, uh, study, or fourteen study. Uh, qualitative data versus quantitative data, which should one prefer to make a decision, who will be accountable for wrongful decisions? Hotel owners are very also concerned with the closure of forty-five business town in the past few years, and we will give you all the information on that result after this meeting. Hotel, hotel owners are very pro-business, again, we don't want to come across here or anywhere in the town that we are anti-business, we are very pro-business and pro-city, and if you engage us, we will tell you what feedback and, uh, what kind of feedback we can give you to help this process, uh, take to the next level. And as I said, uh, you know, if business entrepreneurs for- forces a demand, they will build Hilton Hotel, and we don't mind. Just don't subsidize or incentivize or provide tax abatement, that is the only request from the hotel owners. Yes, people can go ahead and, may, build anything. Uh, a very good example is Casey's here. The land, they bought for seven hundred thousand or more, and we are trying to give a land for, you know, a different rate here, which I understand each of us, because city has been struggling to sell this land for a long time, but we are not desperate at the expense of other hotel owners. And this is where, uh, you, you know, Commissioner, Mr. Nick, you talked about where that number came for the, uh, the, the tax abatement, right? The amount, half a, half a million dollars or more? Then, John, you want to pick on this?
John Pyle, El Dorado, twenty-five, twenty-five West Central. This is a spreadsheet I prepared even today, finishing it up. And, uh, I like, can you see it okay on your monitors? Okay. All right, um, what it shows, um, I can just go down the list here, it's pretty detailed. Uh, the company named Days Inn proposed for six new jobs, okay? Six new jobs, we got that information off of the Wichita State, uh, Business Analysis Forum. Most of the numbers we, we took from that. Okay, um, the project cost for WSU study, total construction was three million, one thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. There were direct construction labor costs that we subtracted from that to get the next net taxable materials cost, and that's for sales tax. Because I don't believe you pay sales tax on labor, correct me if I'm wrong.
On commercial, you pay sales tax.
On a contract?
Unless you're exempt from the state.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, project cost per WSU study. Uh, we took off the machinery and equipment for the study, because there's no proposed tax abatement for that. A hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, leaving a net amount for the tax abatement of two million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. Okay, I visited it, uh, Friday, uh, at the Butler County Assessor's Office, spoke to the supervisor there. And, uh, she told me that, uh, the tax rate would be twenty-five percent times the two million, nine sixty-eight, two forty-four, uh, leaving, uh, taxable commercial amount of seven hundred and forty-two thousand, oh, sixty-one dollars. Okay, I took the mill levy on my statements, uh, for the hotel, and I'm assuming the mill levies are the same for all commercial properties. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I have the state at, uh, fifteen mills, the county at, uh, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, but if you look at the numbers there, uh, that's the mill levy that was on my tax form.
What, what valuation did you use on the property?
Uh, the, uh, right above, we have the project cost for the WSU study. Uh, we took the machinery and equipment for the study, uh, because there's no tax rebate on that. And, uh, net for, the net, uh, cost was two million, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, two hundred and forty-four.
But I believe the, uh, when you do your multiplication with your mills, they give you a different valuation than the actual valuation. In other words, if you got a hundred thousand dollar house, the taxable valuation on it is a different number than a hundred thousand. And you did that?
I think I, I think.
As long as we got that.
She told me to.
I can't, it's too fuzzy for eight or eight.
All right. Okay. Okay. All right, so, if I go down the, the, uh, the chart here, uh, I have the state mill levy at point zero zero one five, uh, times the seven hundred and forty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars. And I end up with, uh, one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and nine cents per year. And I took that number times ten to, to get eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents for ten years. Uh, the county, uh, mill levy would be point zero three five one three three zero zero, uh, times the seven forty-two, oh, sixty-one, and yearly, uh, tax loss would be twenty-six thousand, seventy dollars and eighty-three cents. For ten years would be two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty-nine cents for the county. Butler County Community College, uh, mill levy is point zero one eight zero zero three, times, again, the seven forty-two, oh, sixty-one. Uh, and, uh, yearly, uh, loss of thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents for a ten-year period, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, five ninety-three, twenty-four, will be lost to Butler County Community College. Uh, City of El Dorado, mill levy point zero four seven oh five, uh, for one year. Uh, multiplying that times the seven forty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars would be thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Times ten years, uh, the City of El Dorado would lose three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Uh, USD three seventy-five, which is Circle, uh, schools. They have a mill levy at point zero six six three five eight zero zero, times the seven forty-two thousand, sixty-one dollars. Uh, their tax loss would be forty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents per year. Times ten years would be four hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents. So, for the ten-year tax loss, uh, accumulated with all these would be one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I have a question, John.
Yeah.
So, your numbers today, your valuation that you gave the property that you're figuring these taxes on, does that include, is that real property, or does that include the FFNE in the building as well?
Uh, it's off of the Wichita.
And the only reason I ask that is because FFNE's figured it, personal property is a personal property tax rather than.
Well, that's what, I took the, I took the machinery and equipment off. Okay, that's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And, let's see if I can find this. All right, I don't have this. Do you all have this report?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, on page one, under, uh, it's right at the top. Um, it says a, amount of capital invested for ten-year period, three million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. And that's what I have for that first figure, total construction cost. And then under that, they have amount of capital invested for ten-year, oh, excuse me, amount of the land, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And then buildings, two million, seven hundred and ninety-six dollar, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, two forty-four. Machinery and equipment, one sixty-six, zero, zero. So, all those numbers are right off this report by that third-party professional group at WSU.
The professional group that gave us the numbers to begin with?
Well.
To figure it up.
That's, I used their report.
The economists at WSU.
Spreadsheet, okay?
Okay.
These are not, these are not my numbers.
I know, I know, they're, they're the numbers from the economists at WSU's business.
Yes, mhm.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, a little note under this, uh, section. Uh, Butler Community College and Circle USD three seventy-five have an opportunity tax loss of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, ten dollars, uh, in combined funding.
I'm sorry, John, I, I appreciate this, but I, I want us to stop referring to these as tax losses. There's zero dollars coming from that property today. I don't want to try and scare Circle or scare someone into thinking, or the school district into thinking that, uh, that we're taking away, that, that we're, you know, at the state level here, taking away millions of dollars from the school district, because we're not. Today, they're getting zero from that. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that.
Okay, but this is an opportunity tax loss, okay? Without the abatement.
I know, but we go through the, the PowerPoint that talks about the, the negative impact on education and having a hotel there, where there's zero tax dollars coming from there today.
No, it's not the hotel, it's just the, the opportunity loss of taxes for the schools, okay? All right, um, down below that, we have net, net sales tax, construction materials per study. And earlier at the top-right corner, that's where I came up with that net taxable materials. And that amount is used in calculations, uh, in scenario one and scenario two. The city per, per the WSU study, uh, sell a lot to developer for three dollars and ninety cents a square foot for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the Days Inn project constructions, sales tax, El Dorado gets one percent of the seven point four percent. The state of Kansas gets six point one five zero, uh, City of El Dorado, one percent, and Butler County, uh, point two five percent. So, um, that calculates out to eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for El Dorado. This is the construction's sales tax for the materials, okay? And, uh, I believe David said that it should be on both the labor and the materials, is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure about the labor after I'm thinking about it, because it's residential, considered residential, so.
Okay.
We'd have to.
Well, that's, we, we put this together pretty fast today, you know.
There are commercial elements of that, that would be.
We can, we'll check that, we'll check that. Okay, um, and then Days Inn projected construction sales tax for Butler County at twenty-five percent, uh, one-fourth of one percent, four thousand, six ninety, zero, zero. Okay, what I'm doing here, I'm adding up what we're getting back as a city, okay, from this project. All right, five percent bed tax, estimated ten-year sales, and that's in this report. The ten-year sales are estimated in the Wichita report, not my figures. Two million, nine hundred, eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, and that's with no reallocation. And I'll explain that in a minute. So, five percent of the sales that are reported, estimated sales for ten years in here, it gives the city a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Okay, so that's what we get, based on this report. Okay, Days Inn projected one percent El Dorado sales tax on ten-year room rents. All right, ten-year room rents, again, based on this report. The two million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, times one percent, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. That's what El Dorado, City of El Dorado gets, their one percent sales tax over ten years. Days Inn projected point two five percent Butler County sales tax for the ten-year room rents calculates to seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. So, add up all this money we're getting from the project for the ten years, it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Okay? And so, what I do, I take, uh, I have two scenarios. This is scenario one. And scenario one starts out with our, uh, opportunity, uh, uh, tax revenue, a loss of one million, two hundred and forty-six dollars, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Then we take off the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars that we do receive for the ten years, and we end up with. And we end up with a ten-year tax abatement loss if we approve Days Inn, six new jobs only. Uh, tax loss, opportunity tax loss of eight hundred seventy-one thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. That's scenario one. Okay, scenario two, very similar. Uh, if you look at scenario one, uh, item one and item four are the only items that change on scenario two. Uh, developers may buy lot for two dollars a square foot. And I'm seeing Casey.
Are we on the right page?
Uh, page two.
Where do we see page two? I don't think we're flipping on the screen.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There it is, okay.
You guys are watching us real close?
I'm listening.
Okay, um, scenario two, developers may buy lot for two dollars a square foot. Casey's gas station on, was that Prairie Village?
Village.
Which one?
Village Road.
Village Road, uh, they spend about seven to eight dollars per square foot. So, for their, for their lot. And, uh, the city was selling ours out there for three dollars and ninety cents if you received a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Right, Casey's is right next to Walmart on the entrance to Walmart.
Right, okay.
They're not the same lots. Or the same access, or the same location, location, location.
Okay, alright. So, and the only other change on scenario two would be, uh, number four, the five percent bed tax estimated for ten years, with fifty percent reallocation loss. And what I'm seeing about, um, we have, um, instead of receiving, we received this, this is a little hard to explain. Part of the, um, say, the, the stays at the new Days Inn project may pull guests from the other hotels, existing hotels. So this is like, uh, fifty percent maybe, you know, wa- uh, walk-ins of theirs, and there may be fifty percent drawn from the other hotels. So in effect, you cut the bed tax in half, okay? So we're calling it fifty percent reallocation. Okay, do you understand that? Okay. Alright, and with that scenario, we have, um, the same ten-year opportunity tax loss in scenario two. And we have income of two hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars, which shows, uh, tax abatement, opportunity loss of revenue of minus one million twenty-seven dollars, twenty, one million twenty-seven thousand one hundred and two dollars. Okay, and what, I, I just wanted to, for myself, I wanted to understand, what are we trading for? You know, what kind of an abatement amount, dollar amount are we trading to make this deal? Okay, to make the abatement. Alright, and this, these are the best numbers I could come up with, uh, since Thursday. And that's part of the reason I was asking, you know, to have a special meeting in a week so, uh, we can tighten these up. But this is based on the Wichita, uh, report, Wichita State University report, and the, uh, supervising, uh, Butler County assessor person. Okay. So, uh, again, I'm not sure if we've mentioned this before, but, uh, the existing motels, the six, uh, hotels that in our group, uh, have approximately two hundred and eighty-eight rooms. And on the average, okay, we have peaks when we're, we're real close to being full, and then other times when we're, we're below this, but, uh, the fifty percent, we have a hundred forty-four vacant, um, rooms per day average over the years. Days Inn per the WSU study shows a fifty percent occupancy, uh, with their numbers in here, which would add twenty more vacant rooms to the total. Uh, total vacant rooms, Holiday Inn Express did not participate, so they're not included in this. And so we have a hundred sixty-four vacant rooms average, okay? Uh, we asked the mayor and commissioners to not approve the Days Inn project with IRB tax abatements. We secondly asked the mayor and commissioners, if you insist on voting today to approve, please require Days Inn project to pay at least the school tax levies for Butler Community, Community College and Circle USD three seventy-five, and review the abatement options listed below for approving this project. Again, we have a hundred forty-four average daily vacant rooms that can easily take care of the proposed forty-two rooms without the Days Inn project, still leaving a hundred and two vacant rooms daily average. And we're gonna have times when we're busy, but you don't build a hotel somewhere because you have a few peaks in the year. You know, if you're gonna build one depending on, well, we're full, maybe four or five weeks during the year, well, let's go build another hotel, because we don't have any rooms. They have to go to Wichita, they have to go to the place. Uh, what we found, uh, some of our companies that stay with us, one of them used to be with us six, eight weeks every year. But the last two or three years, they came up with a, what they call a gator machine. It's a kind of a robot piece of equipment, it's radio-controlled. They put them in the tanks, they go in and they high-pressure wash all the tanks, the sludge out of them, and it pumps out the, the sludge. And that company now stays with us two weeks. So, you know, technology is also affecting this, this process. Our existing hotels have refrigerators and microwaves to meet weekly workers' stay requirements. We've had no complaints from workers wanting a kitchenette with a refrigerator and a stove, none at all. With only six new jobs that we're looking at, that we're considering doing the abatement for, we're giving up a lot of opportunity tax revenue our schools desperately need for teacher salaries and school equipment to improve our students' success here. I have a stepdaughter who's in this district, uh, three seventy-five Circle. I do believe that Eldorado Mayor, Commissioners and Community strongly support Butler Community College and Circle School District three seventy-five, and will allow more time and study before making a hasty decision to give away school revenues.
Again, we're not giving away any scho- I don't want anyone calling saying we're cutting teachers' salaries. We're not giving away any school revenue.
Well, it's opportunity.
Well, that, but that's different, John. I mean, I don't want to scare the public into thinking that we're giving away school revenue, because we're not.
Commissioner Young, he's giving a presentation.
I appreciate that, and I was just wanting to make sure that we weren't accused of stealing money.
Okay, we, uh, we just received partial information last Thursday and need more time to study this issue thoroughly, to make an informed decision instead of a hasty one we may regret later. We are not against the developer going in on his own to do this project. We feel the city should not take this risk and lose needed school revenues for teachers and students at Butler County Community College and Circle Schools. Other city abatement options, based on the number of new jobs created, um, these are just some examples, a three-year partial abatement, and a five-year partial abatements, partial descending abatements where it might be a hundred, a hundred percent, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty, down to ten percent. And partial meaning that you, you, you're not granting abatement on all the different taxes. The schools might be exempt from that abatement, and that's what we encourage you to do. For, for six new motel jobs, mayor and commissioners, please do not give public education a black eye. Thank you, and for listening to us, and, uh, we, we hope you make a good decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
John, thank you.
When we talk to our partners, USD four ninety, USD three seventy-five, Butler Community College and the county, when we put our NRP program in, they all agreed to participate.
Has this, I'm, I'm sorry, Nick, has this been, has the county and three seventy-five looked at this?
Yes, they were all notified, notified via certified mail the day after your fir- um, no, I'm sorry. February third is when they were notified. We have received those back. No one has said, no one has raised any objection.
So three seventy-five and the college?
The college and the county.
And the county and three seventy-five.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but on commercial NRP, there's no limit? Correct? We do have a limit on residential. We do, we do not have a limit on commercials, is that correct?
Different thing. With the NRP, you're looking more at a blighted area or, um, something that's dilapidated with an existing structure onsite. But yeah, you are correct, there is no limit.
I, I, I have a couple of quick questions as we went through this, and you guys, John, you said that the Holiday Inn did not participate in the, that room study?
Right.
Wade or Kim, I've got a couple of questions if one of you. So, let's see, there was a hundred and forty-four rooms, how many rooms do you guys, you guys are sixty?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three rooms? And if your occupancy rate is averaging around fifty percent or lower, then that's thirty-some free every night?
Yes.
Is that what your occupancy rate is?
No.
What's your guys' average occupancy rate, even outside of the turnarounds and so forth?
Uh, average occupancy in a year, seventy-two percent. And that's reported to the STAR report, which I'm the only one in the City of Eldorado who actually reports to the STAR report. So I can actually verify my number.
Okay. It's, can, what is the STAR report?
I don't know the definition of it, that's more of a Kim question, but it's a report that all hotels give their information to on ADR, occupancy. Yeah.
Talk, understand.
I'm not that part of the business guy.
Okay, you're the builder?
Yeah.
Okay. And you guys, you, when you came up a while ago and talked, you guys got your IRB seven years ago?
Seven years ago.
When you built? Has, Linda, has any, have any other hotels in the last seven years came in and, were any of our current hotels? If they want to do construction or do big projects, they can apply for the same program, is that accurate? That's all I've got for you, Wade, I think, if anyone else has anything for you.
Thanks, Wade. Are you done?
I am.
Uh, I certainly don't want to put any existing business owners at a disadvantage, but I also don't want to hinder new opportunity. And, and I struggle with, we have folks willing to invest in our community, and not only invest, but move their family here, which I like to hear. And we're talking about this business, and, and the gentleman who is right next door to him is in favor of it. To me, that speaks volumes. Uh, and I, I, I can't speak for CVB, but working a little bit with our CVB, and we've looked at a few potential things that will be coming to town. And, and one of them being a large national promotion, one of the big things that we started to sort through was rooms and hotels and hotels. And I know in, in the case of one we're working with right now, they will not, in this case, with bringing people to town, obviously people make their own reservations in regards to this event, but bringing a large number of people to town, they can't consider rooms that don't have inside doors. So I don't know if that's the difference in the hotel motel, but I mean, I think we have Holiday Inn and Super Eight that have, are those the only two in town that have, I guess the doors are inside versus outside access? Best western. Yeah, and so that, that was something that, for the first time, I mean, I had heard of, and we had to take into consideration, because for them, you know, any other rooms that had outside doors could not be considered for that specific project. And so, I, uh, you know, we're talking about the abatement, and I guess we're talking about lost opportunities. If we don't do the abatement, I assume the project won't happen, and that would be a lost opportunity. And so, I, um, I think you gentlemen have done your due diligence. I think our staff has been very willing, I think Eldorado Inc. has gone above and beyond to answer any questions and work with folks on getting them all the information. And I think we could probably do this for a long time. And it would be something to easily keep pushing off, but I'm in, I'm in favor for it, and I guess I'm gonna ask for a resolution number.
We need to close the public hearing, so.
Yeah, we're still in public meeting here. I don't know how we got started off on this. Is there anybody else from the audience that'd like to come up and visit about this?
Mr. Mayor, move, we close the public hearing.
Second down.
Got a motion and second, now we're in our conversations.
We need a, we need a, a vote.
Motion.
Okay, we got a motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, okay.
Can I ask for a resolution number? Twenty-seven fifty-five?
Can we have some discussion first, Chase?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Getting it ready.
The, the thing that, that I'm, a couple of things, this, they gave us a lot of new information here to try to, to look over. This, and, and this is the first time I've seen this stuff. Three things catch my eye. One, we got a hundred and forty-four average vacant rooms in town. That's number one. The other thing is the potential for losing motels, you know, to bankruptcy. How are we gonna feel when we got two or three empty motels around here when we incented somebody else? I'm, I'm not ready to make a decision on this. This, this is where I'm at, I need to absorb this.
Do you think that information's gonna change in a week?
I think they asked for a week, and they're saying.
No, I'm saying, do you think they're gonna come back in a week with some, with some rosier information that's gonna change your mind?
It might, it might help me make a decision.
I, I want, I wanna say, Mike, I guess, I, I do think this could go on for quite some time, and we have been in situations where we've let things drag on too long. We have folks that are ready to make a move, and, and I think, I, I do think in all res- like, total respect to all the business owners, I think there's a big difference in, instead of just saying rooms altogether versus the hotel and the motel. Because I do think people now look at those differently. You know, I think families look at that differently, whether the door is on the outside or the inside. And I, I think, so you're, you're looking at, you know, folks you got coming in for the turnaround, you got families coming in for tournaments, you got potential folks coming in for festivals or what we might be hosting in the years to come. And I think we kinda need to look at it, it's two different things. I think just counting them all as rooms is a little too blanket for me. And I, and I think we have an opportunity with a facility like this to, to really create another asset for what we could do.
I would hope that the people that's looking at us, we're not saying no to them, we're just trying to get enough information. And I think they would appreciate that if they were on the other side as an existing motel, that we are taking as much time and information as we can.
Yeah.
To make a good decision for our city, and I think one week is not.
I know, but I feel like we've been, we've been kinda at this for, has it been a mu- a month?
These guys got the information Thursday.
About it, but I think it was.
That's a hell of a presentation they made since Thursday.
Absolutely.
Mike and John, I wanna commend you guys for the information that you put together. There's some things in there that I want us to really think about. Uh, you're absolutely right in that, um, IRBs, CIDs, those types of things, one of the functions of those are to try and attract some big businesses, which we've done with BG. Um, I think that it's important that, that that remain a focus of ours as well. You know, we, we need to understand the tools that are available to us by law in the state of Kansas, and, and then find ways to leverage those incentives to bring big and small businesses. I mean, this, this, this country is built on, on small, you know, on small businesses. And, and so, I think that it's, you're absolutely right that, um, there's opportunities that, that we need to focus on as well. You, you talked about restaurants, and believe me, there are a few people that are more saddened to see Terry and Oklahoma boys leave than I am, because I, um, spent a lot of time with Terry, but, um, you're absolutely right, there's a need for some restaurants. You talked about, um, some of the chains, we've had challenges with, with a couple, you know, Applebee's and some things, and IHOP said that we're not big enough, but there's opportunities, and I think that those opportunities are enhanced by, in my opinion, by improvements and, um, development in our business park. Development in an area that has visibility and exposure to the turnpike, which is what you talked about. by improvements and development in our business park, development in an area that has visibility and exposure to the turnpike, which is what you talked about. You know, it, it certainly, it certainly concerns me, the thought of losing current hotels and current hotel owners, I've known some of you guys for a long time. And that, that, that is a concern of mine as well. But, you know, John, when you were up here talking and, and you've mentioned the per square foot cost that we're, we're selling that land for, you're absolutely right, we're selling it dirt cheap and we haven't been able to sell lots. We've gotta find ways to encourage businesses to move in there and start building that business park up. Which, which will ultimately, the, the, has the potential to develop into, a- as the study initially said, in two thousand eight, and I think as all of us would envision today as well, you know, that exit off of the turnpike that would include things like a restaurant, some, the hotel, truck stops, it's whatever, you know, those, those types of opportunities there. So, you're right, it's a different price than what, than, than what the prime location at the corner of Village and Central was by Walmart. It's a different project as well, so I mean, I agree with that. I, I think that, that we're in a position where the, we, we've got a property developer that has, that understands the laws, understands the opportunities that the state of Kansas provides, has secured financing from a bank, has secured a bank, has found a bank to secure their bond, so there's no risk to the city from a financial perspective. And is ready to come in and break ground tomorrow. I'm, I, I think that it is commendable that we have guys that wanna come and spend that kind of money in El Dorado, and like Jayce said, move their families here. We can talk about possible future loss or possible loss, potential loss of monies that don't exist today. But, you know, we, we sent the, the letter to Butler, to three seventy-five, to the county, and all of them understand this and, and have sent it back to us and said, you know, that this, they had no objections. I, I mean, I would, I would react differently if we were talking about an existing business today that set in three seventy-five and, and we're gonna take away taxes from students that they're not, that, that they're currently depending on, and that's not the case. So.
And I might be different if it was a motel. You know, if it was a facility similar to the existing facilities, but I feel like this is a different facility.
I think there's opportunities for our, for you guys to, and, and you have, some of you guys have invested heavily in your properties and, and I appreciate that. You know, there's opportunities to take advantage of these programs as you do that as well. And I would encourage any business in El Dorado, any business that wants to move to El Dorado, to understand the programs that are available. We've gotta use these, these types of incentives to bring, to bring businesses here to help, to help grow our town. And we can't always depend on bringing a big company like BG in, so we've gotta look at those companies that are gonna help improve the quality of life and build us up one family at a time instead of a hundred families at a time, because the world's not full of BGs that are gonna bring in a bunch of biz, a bunch of jobs at once. So this is an opportunity in my, in my mind, to bring six jobs to El Dorado, they were twenty thousand dollar a year jobs, so starting at ten dollars an hour for these guys, you know, I mean, it's, it's opportunities. Again, I, I thank, I thank you guys for wanting to invest three and a half million dollars in El Dorado. But that's, I just wanted to put that out there, I, I don't discount the information that you brought, Mike, or, or John, I really don't. I agree completely that there's opportunities that we need to really ramp up on to try and bring some of these restaurants, some of these businesses, some of this other stuff to town, I've been saying that for a while now. We've had that conversation at Inc., I've had that conversation with Linda, we've had the conversation with Herb. I, I think that it's, I, I don't want anyone to think that there's not, that there's not been work done in, in, in those areas to try to bring those businesses to town. Can we do more? We can always do more, there's no doubt about that. But that, that has been a focus and it's something that we need to, we need to continue focusing on and maybe ramp up those efforts some. So. It's my thoughts.
Mr. Commissioner Chafin?
I wanna thank everybody for putting together a heartfelt numbers in a short period of time. Any of the data that we would have a week from now, a month from now, six months from now, or nine months from now, I don't think it's gonna change a lot, there's X amount of hotel rooms. There's a hotel wanting to come in. Where, where do you draw the line at? So I don't know that postponing it a week, two weeks, three weeks is gonna change any number in, in the sense of what we're dealing with, the price of the project is gonna remain the same, the tax abatements are gonna remain the same, the amount of hotels we have here in town are gonna remain the same, and the what-if number of how well we do in the next ten years, nobody can estimate that to be accurate. The Holiday Inn was forecasted to fold up and go away because of, there's no way it would've made it in this town. Well, as we see, it's done very well at seventy-two percent occupancy. We've got many hotels that have been here for many years, changed owners several times. And they're all still here. We had the worst economic times in two thousand and eight. And we're still here. Stopping this project, do we do more harm stopping it ten years from now? Because we lose the visible growing of El Dorado at the turnpike and the possibilities of restaurants, the possibility of a, a third hotel coming in. Do we save just two, or what happens when we have the third one, because this isn't the first hotel that's come to us in the last eight years. So we very well, economic times change, gets better, we may very well do see another one. So will we have the two hotels out there immediately, not want them to come in? And everybody else, so, so this claim to the doom of El Dorado by having a new hotel, we're not gonna, we're not gonna die. We may have to work a little harder on the, on the, on the bottom end to, to, to compete and make our properties good, I know, being in business, guess what? I don't, I wouldn't have a voice when the next guy comes in on whether or not he should or shouldn't come in. So you have a much better voice in this situation to talk about what's coming than most businesses in town. So, I think we've, you all know, you're in business, you're in the hotel business, and if you had the opportunity to, then, and wanted to spend the money in another town and had these opportunities, you would be doing the same as these men. Every one of you. If you had the money and you wanted to do the adventure and you had the opportunity, you all would jump on it right now, wouldn't you? The difference is which side of the fence you're on. We gotta protect your own and you've done a fantastic job of doing a very nice, a very professional way of, of, of telling your side of the story. Our side of the story is, is what is it gonna be in ten years? What, what will that do for us, what will it do for all the citizens in town? Because we are gonna get more things, we are gonna have things where lots of people come into town, it's, it's happening. It's getting real, you may not be feeling it, it's happening. So, the progress of El Dorado is not about stopping a hotel from being built, because in four years, four and a half years as a matter of fact, there could be all new faces up here. And you guys may be sitting out there, just as you are, with two new people going, I can't believe the Hilton's coming in to El Dorado. And what are those guys gonna do? We've got the Hilton coming, they're gonna have a bigger pool, bigger lights, big, nice restaurant. It's gonna help everybody. I know restaurants love to get together in large groups. You don't wanna have a, an Applebee's by itself, you want an Applebee's, a Friday's, a IHOP, Olive Garden, you, you want as many as you can to get together, you know why? You're gonna have a lot of people come in. So the idea of, of more is worse is not really necessary in your type of business. Travel should be great this summer. Why is travel gonna be good? Gasoline is two bucks a gallon. Where do you pick up, do you sell your rooms to the city of El Dorado, the citizens of El Dorado? No, you sell your rooms to people that are outside the city of El Dorado. So if we're gonna have more travel, more things happening, your rooms are gonna be filled. So, I, I don't think stifling one project so that you can make it is the way to look at the growing of, of a town. I think the glitz and glamour of us getting bigger and bigger, you guys will fall right into being filled up and, and get to ride the wave. Now, that's my forecast, that's the one I wanna have. Is it right? It's an estimate. We've heard that tonight, I don't know how many times, it's an estimate. So, you either wanna be progressive or we can go to the protection government. No new businesses, no new people, put a fence around El Dorado and say, protect, protect it. Which do you want? I think you all want the one that says, hey, I wanna do this, I wanna add twenty-five rooms to the Best Western. I wanna make Stardust a two-story with glitz and glamour now, you know, those opportunities are there, it's a matter of whether you wanna spend the money or not. These opportunities that these guys have are still there for you to do that. I think the person that would be the most concerned would be the guy sitting right next door to it. Because guess what, they come in from the west, there's two, those are too expensive, they're brand new, let's keep going. You know, there's scenario after scenario we can go through, so I'll quit talking. And, I'm, I'm in favor for this thing, I think the potential in ten years is gonna be big. And it may finally fill up that end of town and make it start popping. But with no, no movement in what, fifteen years, except for three things out there?
That's the market.
There, you're right, it is the market, but remember, this isn't the first hotel I've talked about. Or heard about coming, let's put it that way, I haven't talked about any, I've heard about them. I would have be, I'd be subsidizing them regardless of, of, of whether, if, if they qualify for signing up for this, okay? If they, if they get all their stuff signed up and they qualify. And it's a positive thing for the city, not just one sector, I'm talking this thirteen thousand people I represent that have people come in for big weddings, guess where they gotta stay? They stay at your motels, but they're still from out of town. A lot of them would like to have, you know, brand new rooms with the doors on the inside, which is the difference between a hotel and motel, correct? So, glad we got that thing figured out. So anyway, I'll quit talking.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two seven five five, a resolution determining the advisability of issuing taxable bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, furnishing and equipping of a hotel facility to be located in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, and authorizing the execution of related documents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Nick, you got anything to say?
Second.
Okay. I, I, I got a few things, I think the first thing that I would like to say is that the only thing that was being asked was another week. The people, it's already in this picture that is gonna, Beck was asking for one week. They got this stuff on Thursday. I don't think they're, I heard him say, if I'm not mistaken, that they don't mind these people coming to town, and it's about equal competition. And I think that when we sit out and talk about we wanna help existing businesses, we've got, how are we helping existing businesses when government decides by taxation of who wins and loses in this scenario? And I think we have to be careful with that. I, I'm really stuck on that hundred and forty-four rooms vacant per average day. The potential loss of some other motels in town. I'm, I can make you a list of the good things that happened over here. I wanted to spend more time, another week myself, hearing the program that they gave tonight and thinking this over about how it affects business that we already have in town. So, that's kinda where I'm at, if I have to make a decision tonight, I don't make decisions hasty decisions.
Well, and I certainly don't either, and I, and I usually, you know, would be open to this, but given the history and we being in other situations where situations continue to drag on, drag on, drag on, I, I don't think we might have the same opportunity that we have right now.
And we never asked the people, Jayce, if they was willing to go this way.
And so, I, what I'm saying is, is I disagree with you in this situation, and I think it's time to move on it, and, and I moved on it, and so.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
We never did ask the people if one week would make a difference to them.
Again, I made my decision.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Well, and we've had, as a commission, we've had a month to review the cost benefit analysis, the CID information, which was presented to us on the twentieth. So, I mean, I, the, the economists at Wichita State did the cost benefit analysis. I'm not a math guy, John, so I'm good job putting together a spreadsheet that, but, you know, we had a cost benefit analysis done by, by Wichita State, these, that's what these guys do. And so, I mean, I've, I've reviewed this, I've had an opportunity, I, I had a great opportunity to sit through a meeting a week, a week and a half ago and, and listening to, listen to Kim again explain these things and then visit with some of the hotel owners. They told us that night, you and I both, Mike, that there were a hundred and forty-four rooms on average available, and so it's information that we've had a week to, to, to think about, I've thought about it a lot, I've talked to some other people as well. So, yeah, I've, I've, I've had time to vet this out.
And my bottom line is one week, that's all they asked, the six motels in town for information. And, and I'm disappointed that we can't give them a week. That's what's happening here.
No, I, I, I think that it's clear from, from what, what they discussed in their PowerPoint that information received in the next seven days is not gonna change their outlook. It's not gonna make them think, you know what, this is suddenly a great idea, we need to give, I mean, the bottom line is the, the six hotel owners are in favor, they, they don't mind competition, they just don't want the IRB, I mean, that's what they all told me at the meeting Saturday, so a week doesn't change that, so I don't wanna build up some victimization here that we're taking away a week that's gonna change the world. They're gonna get more information, they're gonna come back to us and they're still gonna say, these are the numbers, this is what we've, we've been able to solidify our numbers or modify them based on how we now understand it. But the bottom line still is gonna be that, that, that that while they say that, while, while they've said that they don't mind a new hotel coming to town, they just don't want the IRB, because that's what they told both of us at that meeting.
In the presentation they was giving, you guys wasn't even following on the pages.
I was looking at him and listening to him.
I asked him to change it.
Right, I was looking at him and listening to him.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Wow, Mike, really?
I'll be voting no because I wanted to give them another week, that's the least we could do at least.
I'll be voting yes, Mike, because their, their opinion won't change in a week, they've made that clear.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye, motion carries four to one. Okay. Ten after nine. Ten after nine. We ready for Jedi number four?
We're not done.
Adoption of ordinance for a community improvement district, CID. So you want to give some background on that?
You bet. This is the same group. They're asking to tax themselves more than other businesses in town to help pay for some of the improvements. Um, again, authorized by state statute. And so, if you stay in their hotel, you'll pay a little extra. And uh, it's a decision that they've made based on their economic business performance. Estimates. This was the public hearing that you announced back in January and that um had the business plan, I mean, we published in January, I think on the twenty-eighth. And it said, if you wanted to see the business plan, come to the city clerk's office and she'd be happy to let you look at it. So, the business plan has been out for the better part of a month.
This, this would be something urban, in my opinion, that we as, as a city could be more proactive of maybe calling the motel. We don't sit and watch the papers and make sure something slips by on us.
And, and is that to, and I guess, so I understand what you're saying, is that just to people that want assistance or is that, is that to anybody?
That's people that it's gonna affect.
So we should have done it on, we should have called O'Reilly's and Walmart and Bumper to Bumper
O'Reilly's, Walmart, and Bumper to Bumper got no tax abatements.
So that's what I'm asking you, you said anyone that it's gonna affect.
No, I'm talking about tax abatements.
So anyone that's gonna get assistance?
This doesn't, this, issue number four doesn't affect anybody else other than the Dazian.
Right. Right.
What's the ordinance number, Tab?
Need a, have a public hearing.
Oh, you gotta open a public hearing.
Okay. At this time, okay, guys, I'll, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on this issue. Uh, anybody like come forward and make a statement, may do so, on this issue.
Wade Wilkinson, forty-five fifty-five Westview, I think this is a fantastic opportunity. How many times do people come to you and say, please, tax me more? They want to use this to better their property. It costs you nothing. It costs the city absolutely nothing. Whether they want to use this as a financing mechanism or they need the additional income to purchase FFNE equipment, whatever it is, that's really not for anybody to decide. This is just a simple yes or no vote. This doesn't affect any other hotel owners. Great thing about this program is if any hotel owner or any other business in town wants this program, they can have it. They are not requesting anything special. That's all I gotta say.
Thanks, Wade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Mike Butt, one one two seven North Min, El Dorado. Uh, like I said, uh, last week, I don't think, I mean, it's a good incentive, just like Wade said, so it's a very good thing. So, it, it does help, unfortunately, I did all my remodeling. So I think, uh, the biggest, the biggest hard burn is these things come up when we engage and we talk like this. But it's not done proactively behind the scenes by the Eldorado Inc., like, hey, these are the things you did. Pick up the phone, talk to people. People who have done remodeling. John has done some remodeling. I have done some remodeling. Total lack of engagement. This is a very good opportunity for us to make sure that we communicate on a proactive basis. CID two-person is not gonna make or break a business. Yeah, of course, the IDA is gonna go up, which we talked about in the, the previous resolution. I would like, on behalf of all the hotel owners, to congratulate them uh, to be part of this, uh, you know, business here in town, we welcome. We are no proactive, nothing. We only had an issue where, uh, it's unfair, you know, we talked about just subsidizing something and just puts another business unfair. Nothing against anybody, just like, uh, Mr. David said, hey, I would love to have a head on the show, right? But on their own merit. So that was that, so congratulations again to the, uh, the new family here, and we welcome them. With the CID, I don't think anyone has a big hard burn. Only hard burn is that, uh, the Eldorado Inc. has not done, and I would be very clear about it, has not done a good job of communicating this whole process. It happens only because Dazian is coming and now we are having initiative, or maybe it's a perception I have. I'm wrong, maybe. But these are the things which are good incentives. How many people we engage on behalf of city or the Inc. or the Commerce to communicate this process through email uh, to make sure that other people also avail this whole process. It's not happening. We are not engaging the people, and that's a leadership failure. I'm repeating, this is a leadership failure on Eldorado Inc. That's my two cents on that, thank you.
Hey, Mike, do you have just a second? I appreciate that, and we talked about that a little bit the other day. I, I, I agree um, that, that there's opportunities that we need to make sure we communicate to all business owners, hotels, everybody in, you know, all of our local businesses. But remember, you know, did you get Kim's card when you were there or you, you've got contact with Kim? But there's some retroactive stuff that we might be able to do with CID's if, if you guys want to take advantage of those opportunities. So I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments. And I appreciate you welcoming the, the new owners to town, so.
Commissioner, Mr. Bill Young, I appreciate that feedback as well. Uh, the only hard burn is there has been a leadership failure in Eldorado Inc. That is very unanimous with a lot of people. If you go on the people, uh, at the ground level and talk to some of the people, like you talked about the restaurant or somebody, how well people know the name of the director in the town, how well she's engaged, uh, it's up to you guys to judge. It's time for us to make that step change, like you said. You're talking about getting off Dazian, Hilton? I think we had to start looking at the outside perspective and make that step, radical change uh, to create that, uh, I, I like what David said, we cannot be protective. We want to have the businesses come. The only hard burn was, with the first resolution, was the tax abatements. That puts unfair advantage to the other business. Nobody is against any business now. It's a free enterprise. And a very good example of the free enterprise, I know the location you talked about, seven hundred thousand, we said two hundred thousand, when the go, when the government or the city intervenes, sometimes it's good, like you said, right? Sometimes it can artificially inflate the market that cannot sustain a long run, and this way you might see something going belly up in three, four years. That was the concern raised, when you try to, you know, give some subsidies or what. Businesses can come and go, but we want to make sure they thrive on their own merit. With CID, it's a good investment because what you're doing with this is, you're trying to improve. I, I think you talked about, uh, hey, if you want to build two-story or one-story, John can build it, yes, CID helps with the whole process. Uh, that is fair game for everyone. It doesn't give anyone unfair advantage. With the previous resolution, it gives unfair advantage, like it or not. And we know that. So with this one, I think a lot of the hotel owners are okay because like, uh, Commissioner David said, hey, it's gonna help us uh, get things up to speed, remodel the process, you know, remodel businesses around in town and get, uh, you know, uh, a customer will be happy at the end of the day when they call, when we comp and we remodel. They get a good, better, better place to eat and dine and eat and sleep, you know, lodging wise, they're happy. So it's just, uh, it was not communicated till this point or the last week about the CID. That is, that creates a perception that we are, something is doing, going on behind backdoor. It might be wrong, it's just perception. But it creates that perception that something is going behind doors and not being communicated fully with the existing businesses. We are more, uh, how do I say this? We are more like, hey, we want more businesses, right? Fine, great, awesome. What are we doing for the existing businesses who are already here?
Sure.
Are we communicating, are we communicating with them all these good things we're trying to talk about? Nada. Lack of total engagement on the ground. You said it, sir. You, you represent thirteen thousand people. I want to see the same verbiage coming out from the Eldorado Inc. and saying that, yes, I represent thirteen thousand people. And not go on a witch hunt against sub, individual businesses. And that's what happened in the last three, four days. Thank you.
Sir, are you a member of Eldorado Inc.?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing. Uh, I appreciate you welcoming them in with open arms and being positive about this. Um, this is, you brought up a point that I think that we struggle at the city, on the commission with, for years. And that is, nobody cares about city government until it affects them. And then they go, why didn't you let me know? Where, where was the letter? Why, you know, how do people supposed to know this?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and, and when you're not engaged in the city, like I won't be in about three months. And I'll, and I'll lose complete control of what's going on because I'm not gonna be engaged.
You had control before?
I've had control. I've been at the helm for eight years. But, but it, but this is a perfect example where it is very, very, very tough. Because we talk about it many, many times. How do we get the information to you? In a timely manner? Because you know as well as I do, you find out about it at the coffee shop, which is a story that's been changed five times by the time it got to you. Okay, and you're already mad. Uh, how do you get to the programs? You know, the programs that you didn't know existed that you could have used? Well, is it our responsibility to get that information to you or is it your responsibility to come?
I think the CID came.
So there's, there's gotta be that, that, that mutual meeting and, and we have, we've exhausted ourselves how to get the information out there. So.
Very, very fair, Mr. Commissioner, but the CID came this year, right? If I'm not mistaken?
So, it's relatively new, like eleven.
Yeah, it's, it's a new program.
So, what I'm saying is, it's just the timing of it. And, uh, and like you said, it's more reactive than proactive. I heard, I heard all this, all the hotel owner heard about this. Yes, it's unfortunate that we came at this point, uh, like we engage in the process, but I will tell you, uh, I can talk out my behalf, like I said. I have been very active, I have given my, um, my, my feedback. See, I have, I have a job as well, apart from the motels, I have to survive. Sometimes I don't get, you know, you have to understand the ground reality, but I do my job, I do my bit of it. I have talked to the chambers of commerce and I have given a lot of ideas, solutions with a money-back guarantee for the city. If somebody wants to hear it, more than welcome. With no assessment, no estimates. Guaranteed money back. All you have to do is go to I thirty-five, you know what the ex, businesses, people have experiences, they know what's going on in, in businesses. They can give you real, uh, real fact check. And, uh, there is a huge potential in this place, and like you said, we can all improve in terms of engagement. But if I see for five years, uh, the lack of engagement in the whole process, it's a red flag. I don't want to go after a person or he, and he or she or anyone. But something kind of a reality check for you guys on behalf of the hotel owners or the retail owners is what I'm hearing. If you want me to be part of the Eldorado, I can be. I am already part of the chambers of commerce. Uh, I'm already part of the downtown. We, uh, that's, that, you, you guys bring another good point. We are working in silos. We have different, uh, we have city. We have, you know, we have Eldorado, we have chambers of commerce. We have downtown initiatives with all the taxes we are trying to get from Uncle Sam for the downtown improvements, right? We don't get together either, so we are working in silos. So in terms of engagement and taking the communication to the next level, absolutely, we all have room to improve. But this is a good point, and this was just my two cents on behalf of everyone, that, uh, something has to be done different. We, just like we talked about, we cannot be protective. We have to make that step change at different levels. Uh, uh, there's no doubt about that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other comments in this area? Still in public? Okay, we'll close the public meeting at this time. Do we need to vote on that? That's the first time we ever voted on that. I don't think we do, do you?
I was closing the public hearing a while ago, just because I moved to do it.
Okay. Do we need to vote on it again or are we okay to just close it?
Yeah, go ahead, close it.
Just at, just at the motions, Mike. Okay, I'm with you. Is there anybody else that'd like to? At this time, we'll close the pu, public hearing. Uh, commissioners, have any conversations in this area?
Ordinance number eleven ninety-two. G eleven ninety-two. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number G eleven ninety-two, an ordinance authorizing the creation of the Dazian Hotel Community Improvement District in the city of El Dorado, Kansas. The reimbursement of certain economic development projects' costs incurred within said district, the imposition of a community improvement district sales tax to be collected with said district, and the execution of a development agreement related to said district.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I do have one thing to say about this. I, I think that the CID is a great tool. I, as Mike said, as Wade, as Wade said as well, this is an awesome tool. I encourage businesses to consider this as they, um, look at, at improvements. I'm glad that you guys, you know, have, you're the first, taking the first step in El Dorado uh, to, to create a CID in, in El Dorado. So we've crossed the frontier now and there's opportunities. But I, I agree with Mike and Wade both, it's, it's a phenomenal tool. It's a great opportunity. And, uh, and if you have questions about CID, you can contact city or Inc. or the chamber, I mean, I think everyone right now has got a bunch of information after, after the meeting last week, so. That's all I've got.
Anybody else? One thing that I would think that it would be nice, because they're in favor, I appreciate them looking at that and having that kind of comment to that, because that's gonna be easy for us, for me to make a decision on, because I think you guys have thought through that process. The thing that, when I was reading all this stuff, I, I think we need to be very careful and develop a policy, you know, on how you do CID's, because when you read the law, it gives you a maximum of two percent. And the question is, could we wake up some morning and just have the whole city checkerboard with two percents and not? And I think we gotta be careful about how we use that. You know, these are economic tools and we just don't do the max on everything. We've gotta put some thought in what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, I have no problem with this, we do the two percent, but I'm thinking there should be some good discussion on development of policy about when and how we use CID's so that we stay open and transparent on how we use it. Anybody else?
I concur.
I, I, I agree with that completely. Transparency is huge and I think CID is a new tool for us. While, while not brand new, I mean, it's a couple of years old. This is the first time we've experienced it in El Dorado, so I think we absolutely need to have those discussions about developing a policy around CID creation. Good call, Mike.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor signify, roll call?
Roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, I move we take a five-minute break.
These people have been waiting.
They've been taking breaks, though, they've been going to the bathroom.
Cause I'm gonna take one.
Alright, we can, we can keep rolling, Mike, I think we're fine.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second for a five-minute break?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, don't think you have a second for it. I think you just had Nick say it, and then he left to the bathroom, so.
These people have been waiting.
Okay.
I think we can run the meeting without him.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready for, uh, number five, distribution of liquor tax and court fees.
Okay. Annually, the city distributes money to nonprofit organizations through the collection of liquor tax and court fees. During two thousand fourteen, the city received sixty-four thousand thirty dollars in liquor tax revenue. Thirty-two thousand of it was allocated to the general fund and thirty-two thousand was allocated to Special Parks and Recreation Fund. One-third of the revenue allocated to the Special Parks and Recreation Fund is for the liquor tax program, which is ten thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. The total available for the two thousand fifteen liquor tax program is twenty thousand four fifty-seven. The court fee program, this municipal, the municipal court began collecting fees for this program in December of two thousand and nine. During two thousand fourteen, the city received six thousand one hundred and three dollars in court fee revenue. The total available for two thousand fifteen court fee program is seven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Staff recommendation is to allocate the money as indicated in the staff report.
Okay, guys, you got any discussion? I know there's some people here, we got letters and stuff on that. Does anybody want to add anything, what's on there?
I think it's exciting this year, I think we're able to fully fund all of the requests that we, that we received from everybody.
That is correct.
We, we have that capability, so that's, I guess that means we sold a lot of liquor.
Should be a happy group, huh?
I, uh, the only question I had at all in there, Commissioner Young, was on the liquor tax. The eight thousand, it looked like they had spent forty-four oh seven thirty-three, so they had a net income of thirty-five ninety-two. And the thought that went through my mind was that last year we had a balance of ninety-seven hundred dollars. If we funded in the five thousand, you know, that would leave us, have a leftover of ninety-four fifty-seven forty-eight, and if they needed some more money at a later date, they could come before us and we could give it to them. Who knows, we might have something else come up during the year that's, that's needed. It kind of keeps our powder dry. Just my thought.
Referring to a specific group, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think the, it was the family life. Well, I, I think the, it was the Family Life Center. And, uh, I, I'm not one to short them. It just looked like they had net income last year. And I'm not saying that if you run short, you couldn't come back and ask for some more. I guess that's where I'm coming from.
And I think maybe to make sure you understand.
Yeah.
This is all money that's in the bank.
Right.
And you're talking about, if, if you approve this, we'll put it in the budget for two thousand sixteen. So if something came up, you'd have more money.
Okay, this is twenty sixteen.
Now, it's not normal.
This is two thousand fifteen. This, this gets paid out this year.
That's what I thought.
Yes. We changed it, remember?
No, I don't remember.
We changed it, so.
Well, now you know.
We used to collect it and, and do it the year. We used to pay it out before we collected. Then we waited a year and it was a little short and we gave out less. And then we now collect it and then we give it out. So this was collected last year. And we give it out this year.
I'm gonna go with Tammy on this.
She's only writes checks, I guess. I find it odd.
Does it make sense what I'm trying to say there, guys?
Well, so.
But he's correct. There is money left over. You're correct.
Yeah.
There, there is a balance carried over each year in some of it.
And that'd keep our balance about the same carryover.
In the liquor tax money, there is a balance. And it, it doesn't get paid out every year fully.
No, and what he's saying is he's asking them to cut Family Life from eight to five. And then if they need money, come back.
Well, we have money left over, so I wouldn't see the need to do that, but there's gonna be leftover.
And, and what I'm saying, Herb, if I read this right, cause this was a Saturday night deal too. The eight, the eight thousand dollars they requested last year, they spent forty-four oh seven, had thirty-five hundred, ninety-two dollars, sixty-seven cents net income. So they had some leftover money from last year. Now, I don't know how.
Are you looking at their budget?
I, I was looking at their income statement, I think. And if, that isn't right, okay. Let me see if I can find my paper that I was looking at.
Next back.
Just move, we go with what we got.
Okay, now I could've been, you wanna come up, Darla?
She's like, sure, I'd love to.
This, this is what I'm looking at. You tell me if I'm looking wrong at this. And, and I'm not wanting to short you, Darla, don't get me wrong. I'm saying that if you come up and said, you know, our budget, it isn't there. That's a very worthwhile cause, no question about it. But at least if it stays here, we might have something come up more pressing that we would have something to have to work with.
Do you want me to explain it?
Sure, sure.
I'm Darla Carter and I'm the executive director of the Family Life Center Safe House here in Eldorado. We spend our liquor tax money on our fiscal year, which is July first through June thirtieth. So the money that you gave me.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand and fourteen. I started using it, and that was five, five thousand dollars.
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I think it was, okay. I started using it July first, two thousand and fifteen. And I will use it.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
You, you started using it two thousand and fourteen?
Yes, okay, that's right, okay. You gave it to me February, two thousand and fourteen. And I started using it July first, two thousand and fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. So when I give you that, that's showing what I've spent to date. So I, it, it's not that I have any leftover. I haven't, I haven't spent it all on my fiscal year.
You've still got five months to spend it.
Correct.
Right.
There you go.
Now, this P, this P and L by class says that it went from February one of two thousand fourteen through January twenty-third of two thousand fifteen. That's a whole year.
Yes, because you get, with my books, I have to show February first, cause that's when you gave me the money. So that shows the deposit. And then I start spending it July first through February fifteenth. So yes, that's a year, but I didn't start spending it till July first. So it shows when you gave me the money. It shows the deposit, cause when you give me the money, I deposit it. And then, so when you give me, I asked for eight thousand for this year. You'll give it to me.
This month.
This month, February. So I will start, my fiscal year ends June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, and I will start using it July first, fifteen through June, two thousand sixteen. But when you get the report next year, it will show February where I deposited the money.
Sure, you start when you get the money.
Right. And what I do is I deposit it in my savings account and then I withdraw, um, a portion of it quarterly. So it's always being used.
Well, maybe this February one through January twenty-three oughta change a little bit. You know, if you're doing this June thirty or whatever. Cause, cause this just really says February one through January thirtieth, you know, for the whole year.
Right.
So, so let me say maybe the dates are wrong, if here's what I'm saying, from what you're just saying there. You're saying you're gonna use the full eight thousand even though this shows a net profit of thirty-five.
Right. I will use it before June thirtieth.
The thirty-five hundred?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
I move to allocate the portion of the liquor tax monies in the special park.
Thank you, Herb.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're okay.
I move to allocate the portion of the liquor tax monies in the special parks and recreation fund in the following manner. Scarf, two thousand five hundred dollars, Family Life Center, eight thousand dollars, and Casa, two thousand five hundred dollars. And to authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts with the following recipients and that these funds are dispersed consistent with Kansas statutes.
Second.
Second, third, third.
Got a motion in second? Did you mention Elks in there? Does the Elks come out of the liquor tax?
Yes, sir.
No.
No, they come out of the-
Court tax.
Court tax.
Okay, cause I had written it in mine.
I got it here in my hand. I'm ready to do it.
Well, what's the three again, real quick? Oh, right here, it's the same thing you got.
Well, it's a different re- it's a different resolution and.
I got you, okay.
You're doing the top one or the bottom one?
Okay, got, we got a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay?
I move to allocate a portion of the court fees in the general fund in the following manner. Scarf, one thousand five hundred dollars, Family Life Center, two thousand dollars, Elks Lodge, number one four zero seven, two thousand dollars. And to authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts with the following recipients and that these funds are dispersed consistent with Kansas statutes.
Second.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? Quick question for Tab. Do we, how do we notify the public that this is coming up and when the deadline for filing is?
Ms. Schaefer publishes it in the paper.
Okay. And, and the reason I'm asking, I had somebody approach me last Saturday and wanted to know if they could still fit in. And I said, no, cause there's a deadline. And I know they couldn't, but you need to be prepared for next year. So I think people knowing about this is kinda important and how, with the process that we do with that, so.
And so this motion includes Scarf, Family Life Center, and the Elks Lodge.
Yeah.
So it's fifteen hundred dollars for Scarf, two thousand for Family Life Center, two thousand for Elks Lodge, number fourteen oh seven.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks for hanging out.
Yeah.
You're welcome to stay.
Take me with you.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number six.
Yes, Mayor. Um, this agenda item, Heritage Funeral Home is requesting a special use permit to, um, operate a funeral home at one twenty North Main Street in Eldorado. Um, the planning commission conducted the public hearing on the issue, January twenty-second of two thousand fifteen, and approved it by a six-one vote.
Does anybody have any questions on that? I read through that part.
I read through that as well.
I read it too.
So I, nice to have another business in, Dan, that's what I would say.
Well, and, and they've been operating since two thousand eleven and, and in communication with us, they've, they became aware of the special use permit process, so.
You didn't have any complaints on it? I read that in there.
No.
Okay, we ready for votes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the recommendation of the planning commission to approve case number one five dash zero zero one dash S E P, requesting a special use permit to allow a funeral home in a C-two zoning district in that ordinance number. G eleven ninety-three be approved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call, okay, roll call.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
And Commissioner Locke? And he's not here.
Do we wanna wait for that, or does it?
He gave me his proxy.
He gave you his proxy.
He nodded.
Okay, so motion carries four zero or five zero?
Four zero.
Four zero, okay, here we go. Ready for agenda item number seven, an application to rezone forty-four eleven Southwest Highway one ninety-six from R dash S Residential Suburban District to I-one Light Industrial.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Hang, hang on just a second. Do you have a thumb drive in there or something you need? Can they get their thumb drives, they can leave?
Yeah, I think he took it. Uh, we'll, we'll use that for the minutes.
Oh, they need it for the minutes, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, the property owner at four four one one Southwest Highway ninety, one ninety-six is requesting a rezone from RS Residential Suburban to I-one Light Industrial. The applicant, um, was issued a building permit in two thousand thirteen from Butler County to construct, um, commercial type pole barn buildings on this parcel. Then when he was set to get occupancy, found out there was a zoning issue, and that's when it came to the city's attention. This was also heard at the January twenty-second planning commission meeting, and heard at the January twentieth county commission meeting. The county commission voted three to two to send you a positive recommendation on the rezone. The planning commission voted six zero to deny the application for the rezone. Staff is recommending, um, the rezone of this property and did so to the planning commission as well. We feel that the property, as it's currently, um, situated with heavy industrial across the highway, um, bordered by the Union Pacific Railroad and, um, is densely treed on the west side that, um, is, creates a sufficient buffer from the residential use to the west. Again, if the applicant is here, if you have any questions of him, and I, I'm sure he might like to make a brief presentation to you all as well.
I was kinda surprised, Scott, that six oh at planning and then the city decided that this was right. Can you explain that one a little bit? I guess you did. I, why, why was the six oh against, right?
Uh, you, we had three, three, um, um, property owners within the boundaries that were notified. Two of them, um, um, got up and spoke about noises, odors, um, construction activities, hazardous material being stored on site, the potential for all these to occur. Staff, staff, um, read the definition, what is the I-one zoning district, which, um, the operations cannot be up noxious to anyone due to noise, odors, sounds. Um, all activity shall incur inside of a, inside of a building. And, um, the other was, this applicant is, um, does about ninety-eight percent of his work, I believe, off-site. He's an industrial, um, painting contractor, so travels from job to job. Is looking to use this as more of a storage slash business type, office type, um, property.
Okay.
But he may be more appropriate to, uh, answer those questions.
Okay, do I come forward, please? State your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Hamza Smilovich. I live on fifty-five zero one East Forty-Ninth Street North in Bel Air. And I have prepared a couple pictures and maybe some, uh, things you guys can look over. Not a big presentation, but if I can pass them to you guys.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, on, uh, on our last hearing we had here, we had some confusion of exactly what it is that we do. We had a couple neighbors make, uh, statements that what we do is build, um, water towers at our facility. We actually don't build nothing. We don't do a whole lot at our facility. We'll be using our facility just strictly as a, as a storing or equipment. Uh, in the winter time, what we do, we spend a couple months at our shop during the cold winter. Winter days to work on our equipment and get it ready for next season. If you look on, uh, picture number one, I kinda made a drawing of where our buildings are situated at. We do have an oil pump on site that's been existing, oil pump there for quite a few years. Building number one, we actually proposed to put, the only area that the neighbors can see our property into our buildings will be on the northwest corner of a property. And we're looking to put a privacy fence there so it doesn't disturb their day-to-day lives.
One of the original recommendations of staff, and I think the applicant was more than willing to do as well, was in areas where the trees were sparse along that western border, the residential use is to put up a privacy fence as a buffer.
Yes, and one of the reasons why we had to cut them trees is because that's where we get our power lines from. And it was a requirement of West Star Energy to cut down, uh, I believe it was four trees. And they opened a gap of about, uh, twenty feet where we can see into the neighbor's yard. On picture number two, it's a picture that we looked at the neighbor's property from our property where the gap is. Picture number three is the view. If you look from the east, uh, neighbor's property would be behind the building on the left-hand side. The reason why we put a building there is to stop the view or stop any kind of interference of them being disturbed. If you leave from Eldorado to our property, there's eight businesses and two houses along this, along the road that leads to our property. The closest commercial or industrial, I should say, property is three hundred and twenty feet away from our property is to the boat repair shop that's just south of us. We had had, uh, on the last hearing, we had a, quite a big resistance between a couple neighbors. I can kinda explain the reason why we're having some resistance between them. When I first purchased this property two years ago, one of our neighbors is in the same field of business that I'm in. He's a coding inspector as I am. And he has a big, uh, opposition against us moving into this area. Second neighbor is, uh, during the first week of purchasing the property, we had a, we had found a burial site on our property close to the neighbor's property. We informed the sheriff's department. After, uh, they questioned the name- We informed the Sheriff's Department, after they questioned the neighbors, nobody really knew exactly what was out there. After, after Sheriff's Department spent sixteen hours out there with CSI unit and everything else, you find out being that neighbor has buried a coyote under the property. So every since then, we have had the resistance from them neighbors. We, we didn't cause a noise out there, the only noise that was caused was during the building of the actual buildings itself. I spent a total of ten days and two years on the site, so we're not really doing a whole lot with that site right now.
I'm confused, what exactly are you going to do in these? You're not gonna, you're just gonna store stuff, and that's it?
I want to have a shop where, that, that was the original plan, we went, this is out in the county, it's outside the city limit. We went to the county and we asked them for building permits to build two buildings to run our shop out of there. So pretty much to put our equipment in there, if I want to come there during the weekend, or even during the weekend, work on my equipment, I'll be allowed to. After we actually showed out there for two days, we had a city inspector come out there and say, stop work order, this is not as appropriate zoning for this. At the time, when we were building the buildings, we weren't aware, or nor would we notify from a county that this is going to be issue whatsoever. We felt that the permits were issued to us, we built the property, to our knowledge, there was no other, no other knowledge of having to rezone the property itself.
You, you did obtain building permits from Butler County?
Yes, sir.
First?
Yes, sir.
And Butler County didn't question, give you anything, saying they had to go to the city or anything, since it's at?
Correct, and we didn't build it ourselves, we actually hired a builder to build the building, so.
Okay.
They went to the county, they acquired these necessary permits, they proposed to them the blueprints of the building, so everything like that was approved on that.
Scott, were you in on the stop order part, do you know anything about the stop order part?
It, it was more of a, the county hasn't finalized out your occupa, occupation of your structures, correct?
Correct.
Because of the zoning.
And the reason why we don't have.
The county stopped it?
Yes.
Okay, so the county.
So the county issued the building permits, let them invest the money and build it, and then said, yeah.
And then wouldn't give them a certificate of occup.
So then that's when we've been working with, with him here.
One of the delays for certificate of occupancy is they are waiting on what the zoning is going to be.
Really, uh.
Sounds like government working smooth.
Really, uh, yeah. And, and you know, the, that being an RS district, he doesn't live on site, so that's why it's being brought to you tonight, it's being, he's going to run a business, no one's going to live there. The primary use of a residential suburban zone district is residential use, someone's living on that property.
So, so if he lived there, we wouldn't be here?
So I guess, I'm just afraid to build a house on it, because.
Well, but, I mean, you have a house.
I won't be able to live.
You have a house.
I read the minutes from the Planning Commission.
I haven't.
I did. Because, again, I was also a bit intrigued why staff recommended the zoning change, and the Planning Commission was so adamantly opposed. Do you plan to do any, any painting?
Well, I am a painting contractor, so we, we are planning on doing some painting, or are we planning on having a body shop out there or anything in that extent, definitely not. But during the winter hours, again, like I said, during the winter hours, we pull our equipment off the road. What my company does, we work for municipalities, on the swimming pools, water towers, clarifiers, and, and stuff in that nature. We pull our equipment off the road, we service it, some equipment gets painted, and we ship it back out on the road in March. And that's how our operation operates. Now, are we going to follow, we're going to follow every OSHA regulation on storing material, usage of a material, any kind of, any kind of thing like that, so.
Do you, will you be, will you be doing sandblasting on site?
Small amount of it, if any. I, we are a sandblasting contractor.
No, I understand that.
If I have, if I have a piece, we're not looking to have a huge model operation out there. I got a couple of my neighbors that are here from the shop that we rent right now in Newton, because we cannot occupy our shop right now. We've been sharing facility with them for quite a few years, and in last two years, we probably spent, I would say about four hours of sandblasting at our facility.
And again, with, with I-one zoning, that sort of operation have to occur inside of his building.
Inside of the building?
Yeah, any operations in I-one districts, light industrial districts, need to happen inside of a building.
Including the sandblasting?
And the paint. Any production, any manipulation material or anything, finished product. Storage may be placed outside, but any of the operation has to occur inside of the building.
Takes a four-one vote to overrule the Planning Commission, is this correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a bad deal.
And four-one for the county?
It's a bad deal, and I'll, I'll tell you why, I, I hesitate to overrule the Planning Commission. I served on the Planning Commission, I've been a commissioner for four years, and in four years, I haven't gone against the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I think this is a bad deal for you. I think that what, and I hate to stretch, I hate to stretch this out.
What I'm concerned about is how are we, what do we do?
I know.
If we don't get a zone?
No, I understand, that's what I'm trying to.
Do, do we destroy these buildings and send the bill to the county, or do we?
Well, I, I certainly think that you need to, I mean, that someone needs to have a conversation with the county and how their process goes, because this seems a little backwards to me, but.
We, we, we did have a conversation with the county, and the county approved the stuff.
No, I know, I know, I mean, I'm just saying that, that they, they kind of put the cart before the horse, is, you know, they said, well, you can build it, and then they come to you later and tell you that it's zoned wrong. I, I, I think, again, I, I hate to, I hate to prolong this for you, I really do, but I think that I would be in favor of returning this to the Planning Commission, for them to review again with our comments and our concerns. And see how that goes, because.
You think that's going to make any difference?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I can't tell, and looking at their minutes, what went into their conversation, they just.
Yeah. Yeah, I read, I read the minutes, and they weren't real comprehensive, I hope ours are better.
Well, it was, I, I think it was the voices of concerns from the neighbors, you did have one neighbor get up and made a posmas, positive statement, I think that it was directly adjacent, shared a property line. But then, yeah, staff was here, and just a quick motion was made, and roll call, and bam, so.
And if you refer to picture number two, this is our very next neighbor. To my knowledge, his property looks much, much more industrial than our property does any day. So. There, there is a lot of, I think the only reason why we had objections from the neighbors is because there was a personal interest and personal vendetta versus anything professional on it. I think the last hearing we had, we really weren't ready, I never attended one of these hearings, to actually know what's really expected from it. So I think the hearing kind of went bad right off the get-go, so I don't think the information got out there. To my, what I was listening in the room on the last hearing was, they were understanding that we're going to be shipping and building water towers on site. That we build water towers, we ship them off the site. And this is what our neighbors claimed, that what we'll be doing, we haven't performed anything out there yet, so I don't know where they get these ideas, other than looking up my company, what kind of work we perform, and seeing that we actually work on water towers.
And I think some of the concerns that I've heard, I mean, change, if this rezone requires that those things happen inside of a building. That's, falls within your definition, yeah, what that zoning is.
Do we have any other questions for him?
I don't, thank you.
I have, if you were painting on the property, in the building, do you have, I don't know what the proper term is, do you have a vapor recovery?
There, there is different processes you can use, you can use a dust sock collection systems, where you run the fan, it takes it inside a dust sock that catches anything less than fifty parts per million, which I think was allowable to, to release. So you shouldn't, that's what we use when we go into your facility in the city. And your employees are in the water treatment plant, they don't smell the odors or anything like that, so I'm not expecting our neighbors to be exposed to any kind of.
The two concerns I was, that were conveyed to me, were were vapor and overspray.
We're not planning on spraying a whole lot out there, we're, we, we have a building that's enclosed, if we're painting anything, it'll be inside a building. The type of stuff that we apply, it's quite expensive coating, so we generally, when you spray, you lose about thirty percent of your coating. We paint, pay as much as three hundred dollars per gallon for this coating, so we're not looking to be spraying out there at that facility a lot. So that, that facility is not made to carry on a huge operation out there, and we're very well aware of that, we're not trying to, it, it's a forty by a hundred foot with thirteen-foot doors, you, you can't really fit a whole lot in there in industrial world, other than our own equipment, and sometimes we will take a small amount of a farmer's implement trailer or anything like that in the winter time, just to keep our guys busy.
But, but again, just to clarify, all this is done inside?
Yes.
Okay, no other questions, let's, let's let him go, and he can come back, there's probably some, is there somebody else that's wanting to speak on this?
I think so.
When you come up, state your name and address, please.
Dennis Gates, forty-five-seventeen, one-ninety-six. And like he said, as this started, it was going to be a couple of pole barns, it wound up being two completely enclosed buildings, cement floors. And when I first approached him, I asked him what is, what he was going to do, and he said he just needed a a building to store some equipment. I thought that wasn't that big a deal till I got the letter and seen that it needed to be rezoned. Why did it need to be rezoned? If he's just going to store a few pieces of equipment. So now, as I see it, he's got the enclosed buildings, he's wanting to rezone, he's pulled in job trailers against the buildings. It's sooner or later, if you permit him to, and you give him the authorization to rezone it, it's going to be a full-blown operation. I can see the handwriting on the wall. So I'm here tonight to ask you to deny the rezoning request.
Any questions for Dennis?
For, for the reasons that it's going to be a, an operation, or for the reasons that there's going to be sandblasting going on and painting.
Well, that goes along with the operation, you know? To, does it have to be rezoned to store machinery in there?
Did you get a copy of our regs mailed to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Says if you're going, if you're going to do work, it has to be inside.
It has to be inside, he can have outdoor storage, but he can't create a nuisance because of appearance, so he can't have a junk piles here and there, lack, for lack of a better word. It's got to be organized, it's got to have an appearance that's not disturbing to the budding property owners.
It might not have bothered me so much if he'd been upfront with me in the beginning, but he said he's just going to store a few pieces of machinery, keep them having to move them from Newton down to here all the time. Now we're going to do a little bit of sandblasting, a little bit of painting, going to work on farmer's influence in the winter. So he's asked to be rezoned, so he can have a.
Even if, even if all those activities were done inside the building, absolutely, every time, inside the building, and would you still be opposed to it?
Yeah, because in a few years, he might sell it, and the next guy comes in, and he's got light industrial. What's he going to do? Who knows? He may be running, he might be working inside, he might be running a big exhaust fan you got to listen to all night long or something. That's my point. I just don't want to see something like this, it's almost right in my front door.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Gates.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Larry Light, I live at forty-five-nineteen Southwest State Road, one-ninety-six. This is a property directly across from forty-four-eleven. I feel that we've gotten the cart before the horse, way before the horse. We didn't find out anything about this property being rezoned until we got the letter from your zoning and planning board. When we went to that board, they understood. Sandblasting is sandblasting. It creates a health hazard for me and my family, and my grandkids, and there is no way he can contain that in a building. There are no building that is built for that out here. He talked about blasting inside, when you use a blasting hood, it's there for a reason, it protects the blaster. Once the sandblasting hits the pipe, it turns into dust. And everybody knows here in Kansas, with the breeze that we have, that dust will not stay in that building. I don't care how tight it is. Some of this dust, when you get it outside the building, if you're blasting pipe or steel, reflects off little particles of steel, and this will go everywhere. Into my yard, on my house, onto the neighbor's houses. If he does pipe or tanks, or something of that nature, there is possibility of that piece of pipe or tank, or holder or equipment to have a lead-based primer, if that gets out, nobody wants lead on their property. And we talked about, he was losing thirty percent of his paint due to vapors. Where is that vapors going to go, fella? Again, he can't keep in that building, I don't care what recovery he has. The only thing that's going to keep that in there is if he puts in a paint booth with a ventilating system for that type of paint. I also think that we can't change the rules to the game in the middle of the game. He knew it was rated residential when he come out there. Cause he's planning on putting a building, a house out there. He said he's going to build two pole barns and move his family out there and create a residential, so there's nothing you can do about that. That's his residence, he has a right to do that. He's the only one on that side of the road that is requesting to be anything but residential other than one place, that's the.
I'm sorry, that's the, the what?
The boat shop right south of Trax. The boat shop right south of Trax, and that was grandfathered in. Geez, that guy's been there longer than anybody.
Long time.
Fella, I spent all my life working. I spent twenty years in that spot. And one reason I moved out there, it was all zone residential. This is the second time in fifteen years that we've had to go through this, the other time we went through it, the Butler Rural Electric wanted to put those propane tanks, they're on the north side of two fifty-four, in that same spot, one of them aimed right at my door. I didn't like that, I don't like this. I want business to come to this county, I want to live here, I want to live where I bought. And I think that should remain residential, if they're gonna change it, put them over in the industrial park that you always said that you were selling dirt cheap, that's where this place belongs. May start a little bit of getting this, this, and this done, but I think it'll grow. And over a period of years, what's my place gonna look like? If he does that, the particulates get out, particulates land on stuff, and if it's wet, it stains. Those particulates will cause rust to form. In my experience background, in areas of this, it's not good for my health, not good for my grandkids' health, not good for my property.
Where are you at on this, Larry?
Sir?
Right here is this. That's your house there? Where's Mr. Gates's house?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I guess I'm asking you all kindly to follow the recommendations of the planning board. They heard this information, they know what county. One of his buildings, the big one he's talking about, is two hundred and fifty feet from my back door. That's entirely too close. And with him not wanting to put a house out there and make it an industrial area. There's about thirty houses south of there and about thirty houses west of there. We all bought out there for that reason, not to be encroached upon by a business. On top of that, the the paint that he's using now, it's usually a two-part epoxy, an A and a B, the A is relatively tame. But you add that B part to it, it is highly flammable, and I'm sure he's gonna use paint thinner, which is also highly flammable. All I can ask is you follow the planning board, I know that he went to the county, the county said okay, but that's because the people from the city said there's no objections, that's not true, they never notified us when they started this.
Are you talking the county or the city? Are you talking the county or the city didn't notify you?
City did not notify us that they sent it to the county.
We sent you the notice of the public hearing that you received in the mail.
Yes, sir, about two weeks ago or three weeks ago.
Well, that meeting was a month ago.
Okay, so so it's a month ago, the.
And then you got notice like two weeks prior to that, so.
Correct, and we attended that meeting, and that planning board voted six to zero not to let them do this.
And the next step is it comes to us, I mean, it has to go to the planning.
Yes, sir.
Come to us, so, Larry, what's your street address again out there?
I'm sorry?
What's your street address again out there?
Forty-five nineteen Southwest State Road.
Okay.
One ninety-six. And like I said, my house is within two hundred and fifty foot of his building. I don't think he can contain this blast sand in a building, I don't think he can contain that paint in a building without a paint booth. And he stated he wasn't putting the paint booth in. And the paint he's talking about using can go up anywhere from a quarter to a half a mile, if it's caught in a Kansas breeze. So that not only includes me, that includes both sides of the tracks.
Any other questions, guys?
No, thanks, Larry.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else I can make a statement on this issue?
I'm Ron McLaughlin from Dayton, Kansas, I've known Hamza for about approximately four years, we've worked in in and around two facilities together, the facility we're in now, he's on the north end, I'm on the south end. I'm a small business owner, I have a machine shop, I see Hamza come and go all the time. All of his equipment is well-maintained, his area is is orderly, neat. As for any obnoxious noises, sounds, fumes, there's none of that coming out of his shop. You guys are talking about the state, the the conversations earlier about the hotels and everything, you know, you're wanting business to come to El Dorado. I guess I, I'm not very much into the the governmental part of of how this all works, the city commission, county commissions and everything. My understanding is he bought this property, he got permission, all the permits from the county, and now, I guess somewhere, there's there's a encroachment or an easement that the city has on on the county property, that was my understanding with.
Just three-mile sphere of influence is what they they call it.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I don't know how that all works, but if if a property is purchased and permitted or allowed, I s- I guess it it sort of behooves somebody to to allow a business to to operate how it is legally obligated to operate, there are there are statutes, or there are EPA requirements that I know Hamza is very, very well aware of because because of the work of his business, safety requirements and everything. I guess my my state, or I guess I'm here just to support him and and his business venture that he's trying to establish here in El Dorado to help your community is is for expanding your tax base on what business he will bring to to El Dorado and through El Dorado, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Brandon McLaughlin, I've also known Hamza about four years, that was my dad that was just last speaking, I'm also from Newton. Me and my dad got into that machine shop about five years ago. Hamza, whenever he first moved in next to our first, when we were at our first facility, and we've both grown since then, we had one machine, he had a little, you might be able to fit two cars in there. He used that just to store his scaffolding, to climb water towers, to paint the tops of them. You see him often, he never makes any noise. Like my dad said, he's clean, he don't ever make messes around, and if he does, they're cleaned up before he goes home that night. There's several different components to what he does, I don't even know what he does, 'cause I would say ninety-six, ninety-eight percent is off-site, it wouldn't even be done at these buildings. He has one or two semi-tractor trailers that all of his equipment is on, they're very well-kept, very neat and organized, and he takes them to the job sites, I've recently just, the this last weekend, maybe last Friday, he pulled in his trailer into the shop, and I probably have not seen that trailer there in almost a year. So that traffic with the big trailers and trucks, it's not often at all, if that's a concern, I don't see, I think he's might have maybe painted one or two things, small things he can keep inside the shop, sandblasting I knows to a minimum as well. I, his equipment is, he's got it well set up, he knows what he's doing, he knows, like my dad said, he knows all the EPA regulations, he's in business as a painter. He's gotta know all these things, so I I think it's crazy that he's went and went to the county and he's got approved, and this three-mile sphere was news to me, I didn't know there was a three-mile leniency or.
It wasn't news to the county.
Okay.
The county.
He can't do this in the county regardless of us, right?
Correct, I it would be.
So you're just hearing it, you're just hearing it up here, it doesn't have anything to do with the city of El Dorado.
Okay.
He is not allowed to do what he's asking to do in the county.
Okay.
You're just hearing about it here.
All right, all right.
So it's not the city.
Okay.
We would hope that we would have never issued him a building permit to go into business in a neighborhood full of houses.
Yeah, but he just said there was another business, what, three hundred and twenty feet from him?
That was grandfathered in.
And in any matter, we.
Now, we don't wanna, you guys don't wanna bring in more tax revenue even to the county, I know that probably doesn't affect you much?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
Doesn't give us a dollar, doesn't give us a dime.
It's the, it's the county and its residents decided what all the land in the county is gonna be used for. And the county decided that that's gonna be residential, and so it'd just be like you in Newton, you couldn't, if you live in town, and actually that county is zoned as well, you couldn't just go into business
Anyway.
in your home.
Yeah.
'Cause you want to.
Yeah, I understand that.
We don't, we don't, we don't live in that world.
Yeah.
And so, so it in the city, it's the county, and it's the character of the neighborhood, and the only reason that you can have this discussion is because it's required. The city commission in this case and the planning commission is required by law to listen to everybody and then kind of adjudicate it. And so the neighbors always have a say in somebody wanting to do something different.
Yeah.
And so that's what this is all about, I mean, it's not, it's not about, I mean, there's, I'm gonna say there's no one in this room that doesn't hate it for him, that he's gone to this expense, and that I expect all five of them, none of them wanna vote on it, I mean, look at your choices. Take a man who you say does great work and and all his neighbors, not all of them maybe, but a lot of them are up here saying they don't wanna do it. They have an awful job denied.
Oh, yeah.
That y'all got the easy job, you're just coming up and telling them about it, and so.
But my concern is he's, like I said, you know, ninety-six, ninety-eight percent is off-site, neighbors hardly ever see him, he's in and out two hours maybe?
I think everybody gets that, and everybody gets it, I hate spending money, everybody gets.
Zoning's either or.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that.
It's either or.
Yeah, but if he's gonna be doing, even if he is at that, at his shop facility for the two percent of the time, and he's gonna do, he's gonna be required by the zone to do everything in the building, I think that will keep the sandblast contained, unlike one of the neighbors was concerned, and as well as the painting, the way he has to fill through it.
That that, one of the things that the commission considers is that what's being asked is to rezone it. And if you open up our zoning book, there's a long list of stuff you can do in this zone by right, and so just like in on West Central, if you wanna open a car lot out there, and I think it's a true statement, you can open it, if you buy the ground, open it, do business. There's, you have a right in certain zones to do certain work, and so even though, so today, they're considering changing the zoning, and one of the neighbors brought up the point, tomorrow, somebody can do something else by right. And so even though that today we're just talking about you, and and again, I guess I think everyone hates this conversation and wish they weren't having it, tomorrow it could be someone else, and.
But it would still be zoned the same, right, they would have to come in and get, and if they wanted to do something completely different.
There's many different things.
It's just that wide.
In that zoning, in that I-one, there's a lot of things you can do in I-one.
And what the county does sometimes is they don't rezone, they just give you a conditional use, they make all these exceptions. And and that's kinda, w- w- we don't do that. We, cities are more apt to do, to consider rezoning, even this house is not a spot, is it big enough that you don't consider it a spot zone?
You have heavy industrial right across the highway.
The old stuff on the, on the east, is that what you're talking about?
On the east of the highway is all heavy industrial, which would be even more extensive.
Is it the substation, or is it the old John, the old dealership?
It's everything west of one ninety-six.
So that there's a.
Or east of one ninety-six. And 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 the staff looking at this parcel with the buffers of the highway, the railroad, I mean, you'll you'll probably hear later tonight about our extraterritorial growth area, why we think that's important, and Herb's report. But, you know, if the city was looking at this parcel of land prior to residential, probably looked at it a little different than the way it's laid out right now. With the way the land had been used in the past, the active oil lease, the buffer, the rail, and the highway, and the definition of our light industrial zoning, we felt it would be appropriate to recommend, at least at staff level, rezone of that property.
I would agree.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else like to make a statement? Okay, I've been sitting here kind of quiet thing, what Mr. Gates said, what Herb said, you know, when you make this zoning change to me, you're telling them what they can do on this property, and let's say a year from now, he sells this, and somebody else comes in, and they go look at that list of I-ones, and there's some things that come into that that says, oh, my goodness, that's next to my house. So when I look at this, another thing is there's a pie cut out in a in a residential area. So you're kinda, you gotta be very careful about residential area and putting I-one in the middle of that. So I I have a problem with that part of it, i- in the pie part of that coming, so I think we gotta look at it long-term, we gotta look, how do they wanna develop the area, that's been set up for residential, and to go changing that right in the middle of that pie is not what normally would happen in your long-term plan, so that's just my opinion, so we we've run into this one before. So it isn't, we're not deciding on do we let him do his job or not, we're deciding do we wanna do I-one and allow anything on that list. So now, the only thing that that I could think of is, would he be eligible for a special use permit?
No, the primary use as is zoned today would be residential in nature.
Okay. So if you build a house, it's back in business.
Even with a special use permit.
Yeah.
I think a house is a good build.
Sure.
Certainly.
Let's say, let's say we don't get a zoning for some reason, I'm just gonna jump a little bit ahead. What options do I really have on that? I mean, if I if I put a house out there or any kind of residence, does that eliminates me from having to deal with it?
As long as the primary.
That fixes it, so if I take, I don't know if a county allows modular home to be put or.
You need to talk to them, yeah.
So that fixes. And, so that fixes everything, we don't have to deal with this.
Yes.
We, we, we would like to have you there, we, I wish we had the industrial part.
Well, here's just, he- here's what my biggest problem is, is that when I came into this play, we didn't even know this was gonna be a part of it.
Yeah.
We thought, we're out in the county, so I did my portion of a job, I went over to the county office and I say, what do I have to do to build two shops on this land? And they say you have to apply for this permit, so we applied for that permit, that permit got approved. We went out there, we built the two shops according to them two permits. The day that I arrived to them shops, out of nowhere, the county gets a tip. Inspector, it's their very first two hours of me being at that facility, and says, you cannot perform any work. The reason why I said, I don't wanna eliminate sandblasting, I don't wanna eliminate painting, there is, there is a big difference, if I come out here and I start shooting sandblasting, huge operation, industrial scale, yet there is environmental hazard to the neighbors, there is environmental hazards to everybody around us. But, I'm a sandblasting and painting contractor, I don't wanna say I don't do sandblasting and painting, I'm not planning on doing a huge amount of this, but if I fire up my machine out there for one minute to test the valve on the machine, and a little bit of sand comes out, am I gonna be violating something because I would, I did not disclose it in this meeting? That's, that's why I'm very hesitant to what we say, and, 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 and I wanna make sure that I disclose a full amount of every single aspect of my operation that we do. Uh, what my concern is, uh, so if I throw a house out there, and then nothing really stops me from dealing with this.
It has to be your primary residence. That means you got, you, you would wanna go raise residential suburban and see what you can and can't do in that area, that's what I would tell you.
Cause you are an R S residential suburban, and there's a definition that says what you can do on your property.
I understand that, and, and I understand some businesses were grandfathered in in that area. As this gentleman says, there, if you look at this property, if you went out there, it looks nothing like residential, you can't even see our building off a road, you can't go through, we had neighbors that claimed that we were such a quiet neighborhood in this kinda, I spent total of ten days. It might sounds like he's very knowledgeable about a coating, that is exactly because he's very well aware, he's an inspector for the coating industry, he's a direct competition of me, and he does not want me here. That is the reason why we're getting his resistance. Now, if we didn't get these neighbors concerned, I'm sure it would have a different effect on your guys' decisions.
It would probably, it may have had a difference.
It may mean that.
In fact, on the planning commission
Yeah.
before, my ma- my main thing, we have a planning commission that is appointed by us. They are an advisory board to us. They do, they look at the planning issues that come, that are going to end up here. They do all the legwork, and they make a recommendation. If we, on a consistent basis, vote against an advisory board's recommendation, two things are gonna happen. Number one, you're, they're, you, they're not, you're not gonna get people to serve on the advisory board. Because they're gonna say, why should we do all this work if every time we send them something, it gets overturned?
I, I, I don't see how this is going anywhere, the way the politics work in the city really has nothing to do with, with how I want. I think I've seen the way the politics work between the county, I'm very disappointed in the way that it works, and I'm quite upset about it. I invested my money based on this community's decision that has told me it is okay to build something. Well, after we build it now, it's not okay.
And you have every right to be upset.
Well, what do we do about it? I'm here trying to discuss this, what do I do about, what keeps you, if I don't get a zoning, what power do you have to stop me to go into the building, that I had a permit to build, and actually store the stuff there, and actually work out of this building?
Scott, you wanna answer that?
It, it's, I, I really, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to clarify, I mean, are we gonna, are we, are we gonna tear these buildings down? Are we gonna get out here because?
And I think that's the frustrating part of it, I mean, I'm sitting here listening.
To, to me it is, because I sunk my hard earned money into this based on approval.
And, and that's what the, the man in me wants to roll with it, because I felt like you were, I'm upset with the way the county has handled this. But the commissioner for El Dorado in making the decision that I'm supposed to make, given all the information leans me the other way. And so it's not a matter, but I, I absolutely agree with your, I mean, your frustration, you're just trying to figure out what the option is. I mean, and I don't know, I guess Scott, if you could kinda answer what he was asking, but what? With a residential suburban, I mean, he can't operate a business, there's a small list of businesses that would be allowed to operate. I mean, the storage of his equipment and material isn't that big of a deal on a, in a residential use. But the, but the main thing is, he has to li- someone that has to live on site, the primary function of that land as it is zoned, residential, single family use.
And every day that you do something different is a separate and new violation. And so, while not normal, we have the ability to write a ticket every day that you're in business, and then...
How are you gonna find me when I was allowed to build the structure and be out there?
Cause we're not gonna talk about that, we're gonna talk about land use. The only conversation the city of El Dorado is gonna have is about land use.
Yeah.
And so you're gonna be ticketed for land use, and you're gonna, and your defense may very well be the county let me do it, and the judge may throw it out, but I mean, you cannot, you cannot operate a business in, um, that's not compliant with the regulations that exist.
Would the city be writing that ticket, Herb, or would the county be writing that ticket? I mean, this isn't in the city.
I don't, do, do we do the...
We would have some jurisdiction, um, because of the extraterritorial area.
Which they like.
Should do like, but it's... And I, I don't know, we have a lot of I one districts around town, and, and you have a lot of mixed use with I one and residential abutting it, uh, not to, yeah, not to take that any further, but kinda justification for staff's recommendation, recommendation, staff's, definitely, our first focus is land use, not what he plans to do
Absolutely, yeah.
or anything, so that's, our sole focus is land use.
So I think this is something you need to visit with the county, that's what I think.
That's exactly what I've done.
Oh, well, I think you go back to them, and after we make a motion here and say, here's where we're at, what do, what do I, what's my options?
To what extent can the county be held responsible?
Well...
Well, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say they did it, what they're gonna say is that we gave you a building permit, we did not talk to you about land use. And so they're gonna, they're gonna say, just like if you wanted to build a house, if you came in and wanted to build a house, they're gonna permit it, we're gonna permit it in town, in the right zone. Now, here we'll actually check that, we're not gonna let you build a house on West Central, but, um...
But they gave him a building permit.
To build a shed.
To build a shed without there being a residence there.
A residence, and later on, when this zoning became issue, when we lost the last hearing, when there was voting no, I went back to them and I said, well, why are we at this shape? And the exact comment that I heard out of them was, we shouldn't have you gave a, your permit without the residence being on the property.
We, we all agree with that, yeah.
Did you record that conversation?
Well, I, I honestly, I, I really don't know what to do.
Did you have a witness?
With these, did I have a witness? Most, most definitely I had a witness in there.
I really think what we need to do is make a motion, guys, it's twenty to eleven, and this ain't gonna be settled tonight, de- depending on how the vote goes, so somebody wanna make a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Larry, one, one more quick thing. You can't believe what we still have left tonight, I gotta go to work in the morning.
Fellas, there's two misstatements made tonight, number one, I am not competing with him, okay? I have no, I don't want to, cause I inspect what he does.
I'm also a...
Not work with him, and I work on oil tanks and that, not on water tanks.
What's, what's number two?
So, any, any personal thing is just me.
Okay, that's the person, what you're saying.
If you allow this tonight, he can sell it tomorrow and then put anything they want on that property.
Under I one.
Huh?
Under I one if we change it.
Correct.
Yeah.
If you change it, and it's been residential for how many years?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain, entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the recommendation of the planning commission to deny case number fifteen dash zero zero one dash R E Z, requesting a rezoning of the property located at fourteen, or forty-four eleven Southwest Highway one ninety-six be accepted.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
A roll call, okay.
It's only a roll call if you pass, if you use the one that passes the ordinance, it's just...
Oh, so this is good.
Hey, you got it right. I apologize.
Okay, and this is for denial?
This is...
To approve?
To approve the recommendation of the planning commission.
Which is deny the rezon.
Which is deny, okay, so we got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number eight, C D B G grant agreement, project three ninety-two.
Yes, Mayor, last week our grant agreement was submitted to the city, and tonight we're asking you and the city commission to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement with the Kansas Department of Commerce.
Okay, now the only question I got in my mail drop Saturday, there's a letter from Kansas Department of Commerce, and it says, grantee is required to, to attend the entire training, and it was November eleventh, did anybody go to that?
Yeah, I did, and, and they were, and unfortunately, they sent you that letter and didn't C C any staff or anyone else.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
So I, we might tell Brian, make sure he looks through my stuff, and I don't care what he opens.
And that's, and that's...
Because that's important stuff.
Someone's got, and I'll tell him that now that, and that was kinda that, pointed at note last week.
There's something that looks...
We'll open it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement number fifteen dash P F dash zero zero four with Kansas Department of Commerce for the community development block, block grant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? One more quick thing on that one, on page four, as I said, it says depositories for program funds. The thing that really caught my ear was that if we earn any interest on this money prior to dispersment on advances of grant, we shall submit it to the state for a subsequent return to the U S Treasury. So we gotta keep this totally separate and not pay any interest, or get any interest on, or it's gotta go back, so I'm saying, I don't know how we track that.
The interest goes back.
We just, we just put it in non-interest bearing account.
Okay, does that co-mingle with our city funds?
No.
What we do, Mayor, is, is we will, we will make weekly payments to contractors, then we'll request reimbursement to state, so we're repaying ourselves back. So the money's not sitting there idle to pay a contractor, we've already paid that contractor, we're just reimbursing ourselves.
Okay, I just didn't want somebody hogging over a technicality there, so... Okay, we got a motion and a second? I, something else got me, engineering design ninety-four thousand, construction inspection nineteen-five, administrative twenty-five thousand. That's a pretty good chunk out of that million dollar deal.
A lot of that's to be negotiated still, um, so...
Okay, do we take, uh, Scott, on something like this too? I mean, we're getting a grant, that's paying half, so that's probably paying for the engineering part. But do we ever take our cost in engineering and put it out on G O bonds? I guess I got a kinda question, if, if we pay engineering department out of a project, and we put it in a G O bond, we're kinda taking in wages and putting it out on twenty year debt. But I guess we would look at that as if we was hiring another engineering firm and we'd be doing the same thing.
Well, that, you know, ours is more construction engineering, so inspection, surveying fees, the design engineering is hired professional engineer to do that work. Um, we do take those engineering fees, and they are bonded out and paid back through by specials or city at large funds
Yeah.
for the project.
Okay, I guess.
And, and there is, there is multiple grant dollars that we get where our staff time is reimbursable from the feds or state, um, so we track that as well, and we get, the city gets reimbursed for our time on any of those projects.
Okay.
But that's how we pay for that department.
No, I understand, I just putting wages on G O bonds, but I guess I gotta look at it like if it was another engineering firm, we'd be doing the same thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Or, or not, I mean, just like everything, we can ea- we, we pay cash for some stuff and we borrow for some stuff, and we do both for some stuff, and so it's kinda depending on the situation.
Okay.
Same with admin fees.
We got a motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ready for agenda item number nine, new business discussion items, who would like to start that segment?
Mine's real short.
What?
Mine's real short.
Oh, okay.
Um, where are we at on cleanup, and what kinda schedule we got, and how we gonna get it done on West Central?
I, I could maybe answer a piece of that, I don't know where we're at right now, but we're gonna talk in the next youth commission meeting about the future cleanup of that area entrances going into El Dorado, so that, I guess, part of that.
You mean the youth commission's gonna do it?
Youth commission would be seasonally possibly considering doing a service project for the entrance, cleaning all that up, but in regards to right now, I don't know, but I thought I'd throw that out there. And code enforcement and staff has spoke to a few businesses along West Central, and for, there's a couple of them, they're gonna get additional dumpsters and, and some other things like that.
Okay, now, who, when we gonna get the ditches cleaned up?
The, which ditch?
They're freaking full of trash, the south one especially, fence lines.
The fence line between Walmart and...
If you haven't noticed it, it really looks bad. Just drive out there and look at it, and then tell me if it's okay, I'll, I'll quit talking about it.
It, it, there's no need to quit, it's, to quit talking about it, it's not okay, I mean, it's, there's a lot of trash along the fence line.
Okay.
I agree with you, Dave.
And all I want is just a schedule, if we're gonna do it in a way that it's, because the trash is never gonna go away.
No, and it's gonna be, we, if we clean it up tomorrow, you'll see it Friday.
Well, but it'll be less, it'll only be a week, not six months. So what I'm saying is, is it's an issue with the city, it's our entrance, I don't think we're gonna be able to say, Sutherland, that's all your trash. Walmart, that's all your trash. Vintage for, vintage car lot, whatever finally blew off of it is over there, the people, the neighborhoods, who knows? All I know is, is that we got trash in the ditch and it looks bad.
Youth commission project, or maybe Herb can get Rotary's?
I mean, we, we wouldn't be right now with the direct solution, but I think...
Yeah, well, I don't wanna wait six months before it's done.
Rotary, you do it, Herb.
Uh, Rotary's not...
We're already picking up Dylan's trash.
I don't know if Rotary's the right club to...
Well, and even this, Dave, to your suggestion, after you made that suggestion, I had Jim talk to the judge, she's happy to assign work, and so...
Now, I think it's, that's a great way to do it, if they show up.
If they show up to do it.
And, and, and you may not know this, but a lot of times they don't, and so, anyhow, no, I'm with you.
I just wanna be proactive to get the thing where we haven't, uh, and, and maybe make, make some of our businesses aware that they're, they're blowing, they got loose trash.
I'm with you.
But, uh, right now that doesn't fix the trash in the dicks, ditch.
I'm with you.
And if there's... And if there's, is there three people that would like that done or is it just over?
Yeah.
Just me?
It's not just you.
Hey, you got five on that one.
Do I? I don't, I haven't heard Nick yet, he's kind of pro trash. You for this or not?
I'm pro trash.
I go, I, I just don't know, I've, I've known you a long time. You for it or not? Yes or no? Yay or nay?
Well, you, is, then are you done talking?
Well, I'm just like, I'm listening basically.
If, if you're done talking, then I'm for it.
Great.
You got anything else, Dave?
That's it.
Okay, Nick?
Tomorrow is Shrove Tuesday and that means it is the annual Trinity Episcopal Church Shrove Tuesday Pancake Supper. And it starts at four and goes till about seven. And it's free will offering and it's pancakes and sausage and it's a great time and great pancakes and great sausage and come and let Dan Demo cook you some pancakes and Vinsel cook sausage. So hope to see everybody there. And that's all I got.
I'm for that. That's yay for me.
Yay.
Um, Herb, a while back I had mentioned this and I just, I wanted to bring it up again and kind of see if we've made any progress and how this is being handled, but I know in the sales tax advisory board meetings, there's been some requests for some funds that may be considered maintenance expenses for some of our parks and recreation facilities. And I'm just curious why, why we're not able to, and keep those funds in our normal budget to maintain the facilities that we have.
Um, I think, um, I think that our budget has grown in a manner that got things like that pushed aside and shutting up, but we have limited amount of resources and you can only spread them so thin. And so it's, what aren't you gonna do? And so, no, there's no good answer.
I'm, I'm, I mean, I get that, that being said, you know, we just, we have facilities, we've got to maintain what we've got. I mean, we, and we can't take on any more projects if we're not, if we can't maintain what we have, so I would just encourage you to, and I know that you do this, but to continue working with staff uh, and especially in the rec department and parks as it pertains to that, and try and understand how we can better maintain these.
I'm with you.
So that we don't have to use sales tax money for that, instead we can use that sales tax money for special projects.
I'm with you, I agree a hundred percent. Then I can cer- certainly do that.
Thank you.
Chase, you got anything?
Uh, no.
I was sitting at that sales tax meeting too wondering, because that's a good point, Bill. The thing that I was questioning, when we go fix the basketball court out at the high school, which was around sixteen thousand, we kind of need that for MAYB, which brings a lot of stuff to town and does a lot of bed tax. I, I was questioning why we couldn't fix that under tourism tax. Uh, I just, take it creative, but they've got some money and, you know, how do we do that and so.
I know.
That, that might kind of help a little bit, but I don't know if you do, just a thought.
And, and in the past, when, when I came to Eldorado, CVB money all pretty much went to INC. I mean, they asked for so much and that's not a hundred percent true, but the lion's share of it went to INC and that was kind of the end of it. Um, since, and, and, I mean, it started when, when I came and you were still on the commission, you asked about using that money for the building that they have, and so we have absolutely paid for air conditioners and stuff in the civic center out of CVB money. And I think your logic on this is fine, I don't, I mean, I've never thought about it, but you're absolutely right. Um, the, the beneficiaries, and I oughta, before I get too far down that road, oughta understand the percentage so you have a, understand it, but, um, what the commission has told us to do is you want more things in that gym and that you want more youth activities and primarily on weekends to fill those hotel rooms. And so, um, besides MAYB, it's volleyball. We think the growing, our growing niche right now is probably gonna be volleyball, which is a still, is that same, same gym. And so, um, let us understand that and, and, uh, and then we can go down that road.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, a couple of things on mine, I'll try to do this quick. The railroad overpass on North Main needs painting. Now, I'm, I'm, Dave's worried about going west with trash, I'm going north with the way that overpass looks and it needs painting again. And we'll go under it, we'll not think anything about it, but I'm telling you people that come to town will notice that. So, I don't know who painted that in the past or how that worked, but I, that, that's gotta get bumped up somewhere to get fixed.
The railroad, the only time I think we have gotten on it is to maybe cover up some graffiti and that was more on the abutments.
Is that the railroad company that kind of works with us? There's one that's.
Well, they own it.
That's Burnley to Northern Santa Fe, on Northway.
Can, can we call them and ask them?
Sure we can.
We can talk to them, yeah.
I mean, all they do sells snow, but that needs, needs to be fixed. Uh, we talked, we had a special meeting on lake debt and I want to thank the commissioners for finding the time to ten. I was disappointed that Herb wasn't there, but I understand where he was at. Uh, you, you, the commission had asked me to send out an email on some ideas, I completed it Saturday afternoon and sent it out. I just wanted to read it real quick to put it in record. Mayor's ideas to consider, refinance stadium debt, two million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, six eighty-nine thirteen at four percent to the going GO obligation rate of one point eight oh. Estimated savings, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, six fifty-eight seventy-eight. Refinance space two and space three lake debt, eight million seven ninety-seven, three three four, point three seven. It's, uh, at three point five oh one to the going GO obligation rate of one point eight oh. Estimated savings, one million eight twenty-eight, two seventy-six sixty-five. More substantial savings to consider. Consider taking the million two, I'm not gonna give you all the deals, the million two in cash in the checking account and paying down on space two and space three lake debt. Note rate is at three point five one, the estimated savings on that would be five hundred and seven thousand. Consider selling one point seven million in CDs with an average rate of one point four one two and paying down on space two and space three lake debt at three point five oh one, estimated savings, three hundred ninety-four thousand. Other reasons to consider, if space two and space three debts are paid off, it will free up four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to invest annually towards the big note. If space two and three deaths were retired at the Army Corps of Engineers, this would have a percentage of water storage free of debt. Need to review contract to confirm, I've been thinking about that. We are currently on a hundred year low for thirty year treasury rates. We don't know for sure where rates will go in the future. Items that I think we should consider putting into place immediately, a written lake debt investment policy covering rate risk, credit risk, types of investments, who is responsible for decisions and many other items that could be put in writing for staff to use as a guide. Annual written review of the lake debt current position. This should include investment addressing, current value and current debt owed to the Army Corps of Engineers. All purchases and sales during the year with a copy of transactions attached to the report. Copy of bank statement attached to the report, a memo attached explaining the reasons for the decisions made on investment decisions. We need to continually monitor our progress towards our goal of paying off the big note. Keep let, lake debt investments totally separate from all other city accounts. Need a current analysis of the Corps of Engineers debt repayment plan. So that's what I'd sent out that you guys had asked me to do. We don't have time to just give you guys because you got this Saturday afternoon, so. I'm not saying this is all gonna be done, but there's a lot of pieces to that that we can consider, is what I'm saying, guys, so.
Thanks for sending that out.
Mike, I appreciate you sending that out, when we had that meeting, you had those ideas there and we, uh, and Herb wasn't there, but we did as a group direct staff at the time, which would be Herb, to, to receive the emails of you typing that up and then get that to our financial advisor to, to do a full financial review on it.
And I have, I've already forwarded it to both Kim Bell and Tom Calico, our financial advisor. Um, a lot of those things we've already talked about and we constantly check for the advisability of refinancing that debt, and so, um, in fact, I did it a month ago and have that information and, um, so getting that together, but under, and I, I understand if you do the top things. Mike, I, I don't know if you included the cost of issuance, the penalties for paying off, and so your numbers, I think, are wrong.
Those are gross numbers.
Let's, let's just, let's have you put together a report from, from Tom, financial advisor.
It won't look as rosy when you get it from me, because mine will be not just plugging in two numbers into an amortization schedule.
Right.
And so, um, and so the bigger one in my mind that you need to think about in the report, I'm confident we'll say it, is for thirty years or thirty-five years, you've been going on a schedule to deposit money counting on twenty-eighty. And so if you pay these notes off with your cash, you are telling, you are making a decision that interest is not going up. I don't think the ninety percent of economists in this country will tell you it's going up next year and this year. And so if you all want to say that, you can sure do it and you can sure spend that money because it's not earning what you're paying. That's a fact. But you're gonna spend money that had a plan, that you've been following for thirty-five years and you're deciding that it's different. And so I don't have any qualms about you doing that, no. Yeah, that's your decision, that's not mine, but it's a big change in what you're doing. And so I, I think you need to be fully informed and, and I'm get, and I'm working to get you informed.
Well, if, if rates go up, or this two top ones was talking about refinancing now.
Oh, no.
Refinancing at a lower rate.
And the whole thing about refinancing is you have two issues there. One, one's more than thirty years, you can't do, well, you can do it, but your payment's going up when you refinance because you only go thirty years. And then the second one, the first one you can do, the little one you can do, um, but your, you want a margin when you refinance. By refinancing those today, your gain, your real gain is not big enough that any financial advisor's gonna, no, no financial advisor that's not interested in selling the new bonds is gonna recommend you do it. And so, and I can give you all that and I'm happy to, but that's just part of what I do every day for.
These are way too big a numbers to try and figure out at eleven o'clock.
Let's get it all, yeah.
I'm with you.
You've got it, you've got it Herb, so let's get it written up and get it to us.
As soon as I get, as soon as I get the real information, I'll, I'll get back to you, but I have forwarded it out today.
Thank you.
Ready for me?
One more thing, I have one more thing real quick that we've, I forgot to mention. Um, Thursday night, uh, is the mayoral forum and it's on channel seven, I'll be here at the courthouse. Mike's running for mayor, I'm running for mayor, Vince is running for mayor, Jeff is running for mayor, so we'll all be up here for the, for a forum that's put on by the chamber.
Here, it, it's put on by the Chamber of Commerce here at City Hall, not.
I'm sorry, here at City Hall, it'll be televised on channel seven.
It'll be, and, and it'll be open to the pub, this room will be open to the public.
This room will be open to the public, so come on down and it'll be televised, it'll be great fun.
Two quick things. Um, a year or two ago, we were talking with INC about building a spec building out on property the city owned off of Oil Hill Road. Um, that was the, that ground was bought by BG, so we haven't done anything with the building. If you don't mind, I'd like to talk to INC about putting the building up at the airport, we talked about two locations. Out at the industrial park and out at the airport. Um, if you don't mind, I'll start the conversation about putting it out at the airport unless y'all want to put it somewhere else.
We own the building now, is it a Butler building that you take down?
Well, you know what M six used to be in?
No. I know where M six is today.
Well, it's that long pe, it was that long building that John Banks owned right on the east side of the water tower in the industrial park.
It's, yeah, it's a still building.
And so BG gave us that building when they took it down, so we have all the iron.
Okay.
Okay? And so if you don't mind, I'll start the conversation, but I won't do anything. Um, and then tomorrow Butler County Commission is gonna take up, um, our inter-local agreement with them. Currently Augusta and Eldorado both have inter-local agreements that, like tonight's building, come before you, it's in our growth area. Um, Commissioner Palmer has indicated a desire that, that, or a point of view that, um, she thinks, I think that they represent those people in unincorporated Butler County and, and that you all can't do it, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. And so, um, I'm gonna, I think that you probably want to continue to do it and if you do, I've got a little note to pass around if you would sign, and so we'll take it to them and say the city commission still wants to do this.
You want it, it's already signed.
Oh, great.
So we're on it, doggone it.
Well, good, that was the only other, that was the only.
They might feel different after I deal tonight, but.
Well, that, um, to, to, to the response, you know, and I don't know this, but, um, one guy said they didn't know that the county took it down. And so, if the county, if all those people didn't go to the county commission and tell them no, well, they're only basing on our information, so.
Yeah, that's, that's their issue.
Anyhow, I'll be, thank you.
Okay, we are ready for item, agenda item number eleven, executive session. This item's for the purpose of discussing legal matters and matters relating to non-elected personnel. So, anybody want to make a motion and how long do we need?
I think probably at least thirty minutes. For your part?
Would it, would if, is there a sense, are we, do we need to get this handled tonight? I mean, I don't, I don't want to put it off, but I feel like I would prefer to give it, no, well, you had to go home, but to give it the proper time and attention.
Can.
I think we do the legal.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
Do you need them to act? Or can we send them something and then if they need to get together to do something, come back?
Yeah, if it's the legal stuff, then I'm in for that.
We can do the legal, I think, I think Chase is speaking to the non-elected person.
The second half of that. Yeah, I'm down for the legal part.
Okay.
If everything else.
I'm down.
I'm down on the legal stuff.
I'm down, it's eleven ten, I'm hungry still.
You need thirty minutes, Jim?
Let's, let's try for, if we're gonna cut out part of it, let's try for fifteen, it might have to get more, but I'll talk really fast.
I move, I move.
Fucking fast.
Well, I'm kind of, I need to hear it very good, so.
Can't talk too fast, so maybe twenty minutes.
Take it slow. Yeah, just a second, we have a motion for this?
Do we?
Nobody's read it, nobody's read it.
Nobody's read the motion yet.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I'm with Eldorado Elks Lodge, we were told twice that you were going to address the excess sales tax issue tonight and that we should probably be here.
Sir, that meeting scheduled for March second, first meeting in March.
We were told last Friday and also today it was going to go on this agenda.
Yeah.
Who?
It's not there, Roger, that's why, it's gonna be.
Roger, thanks for hanging out.
Tuesday, and I'm sorry I had to wait till eleven to hear that. So I.
I called again today to confirm it, so that's, I just wanted you to know that, that's why we were here.
I apologize.
Okay.
Okay.
Roger and Phil, thanks for hanging out.
Do, uh, somebody want to make a, for a motion for executive session, let's go for twenty minutes and we come back.
I move. I move, we go into executive session for, in return.
Eleven thirty?
At eleven thirty.
Second.
Got a motion and second, that we go into executive session. Twenty minutes, we will be back at eleven thirty, thank you.